Y'all ready? All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the January 30th, 2017 special school board meeting of the Lake County School Board. If we would first begin with a moment of silence, followed by this pledge of allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this morning. We certainly have a very packed agenda, so we're going to do our best to try and stay on target and on track with all the topics that we have to get through. Certainly, it's an ambitious undertaking, but I think that we can do it. We have one public input card this morning, and it was a speaker wishing to speak on a variety of topics. Normally, we would have that speaker come up for that particular topic, but since it covers kind of a variety, he's just going to go ahead and come up now. So Steve Tibbetts, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. As you say you have a packed agenda this morning, took me a long time to get through it, but I have a few comments, questions, discerning thoughts that I would just share with you. Starting with a demographic update, I would ask, is there a concern that the number of home-school students in the district has increased by 60% in the last five years? Also make note that certificate of occupancies jumped by 15% from 15 to 16. Obviously, the total impact fee that was charged did not negatively affect building in this county. Please make note, as you're preparing to hopefully talk to county commissioners, 11 elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools will be over capacity in the year 2020. We need that money desperately. In regard to 3.03 team update, as we evaluate teachers, one major area is neglected, and that is the recipients of their efforts. In this age of metrics, there needs to be one developed for at least middle and high school students to rate and evaluate teachers. One of the metrics used is that an effective rating shall be given to a teacher whose students score as low as 40% on 11 different AP subject tests. Then again, high-performance measures are based on final exams and standardized tests. This measure definitely is biased against poor test takers while ignoring their body of work, term papers, oral presentations, et cetera, that they learn as students. You need to talk further with teachers discussing consistency of evaluators, teaching to standards instead of teaching, demanding engagement of those who want no part of it. I look at the number of people who have worked on this, and it is obviously a product of a committee. Ask yourself, when you were in school, did you know who the best teachers were? Find a better way to sort this out. Regarding personnel allocations, I made a note that some of the assistant principals are absolutely awesome in the smaller schools, that they can work up with up to 700 students. As school gets larger, assistant principals obviously get less productive. In the most large school, they're dealing with one per 355 versus one per 700. And maybe I have to wait, Mr. Chairman, or shall I just?
I think you just had one more topic there. Go ahead and take a minute.
On the personalized learning discussion you're going to have, I would simply ask you to think long and hard about this. One of the major things or major facts in the report that you're going to read is four out of 10 students drop out of college because they're not adequately prepared, 57% out of community colleges. I would tell you that that's more the college's problem of letting them in than it is the schools and getting them ready. Please, please, as we talk about personalized learning, realize that in spite of what our former president said of everybody should go to college, no, they shouldn't. And we need to start thinking about how we can teach them to live as productive citizens rather than dropouts from college. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one topic on our agenda that is actionable today, which is the reason we made it a special meeting, so we'll go ahead and do that one, and then we have a speaker card for the next item on our agenda.
Sure. Good afternoon, or good morning, board members and members of the audience. Our first item this morning is a field trip for Eustace High School Jazz Band. They're requesting approval to attend the Jacksonville Jazz Band Festival on February 7th. So this is between now and before we would have a regularly scheduled board meeting because it is over 100 miles from the school. It requires your approval, so I want to recommend approval of Eustace High School's request for the jazz band to attend the Jacksonville Jazz Band Festival on February 7th, 2017.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Stephanie and second by Sandy. Very good. Any questions or comments before we vote? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, that's 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the demographic update. I have one more public input card for that. Vance Yocum, please, come on up.
You know, I like to commend a lot of the staff who put items on the agenda, and they always include attachments and information so that the public, as well as you, can review that to see what the item is about. And this one is one of those issues, the demographic update in the PowerPoint. And I just, in looking through that, I noticed that, and I'm sure we're going to have a much better explanation in a minute, but that it seems that the school population didn't really grow in the public schools, that instead, the growth was in the McKay scholarships, home teaching, and charter schools. And it kind of brings up my thought that, in looking through this whole study, it's all based upon like housing growth and, you know, population, but nothing about the social issues that may be causing this. And I just would like to bring up that I would hate for you to be caught into the same situation that Hillary was, where she totally ignored all the people who were in the middle of the country and that voted for Mr. Trump, and that you may be avoiding the issue of all of parents out there that are inflamed about Common Core and about other issues, whether it's the testing and so forth, and they're starting to take their kids and walk. And I think that you ought to look at the content of your textbooks, and you ought to start addressing the complaints from these different groups as opposed to ignore it, like I think has been done in the past, and that you go ahead and start indicating where you have mitigated some of these concerns realistically, not just, you know, saying it. And that's my thought. And getting back to one issue, which I was talking about, all the people that give us a lot of attachments, but yet Mrs. McLeod on item number 3.10, 3 dot 10, just says the policies, you have to go look up your policies. It doesn't explain what the changes are going to be or anything else, and I would suggest that that's inconsistent with the good practice that I see from the others, and I would recommend that maybe all the people who put items on the attachments do include some backup for it. Thank you.
And actually, you kind of jogged my memory here, I think, Superintendent.
3.10 is, will not be moving forward today.
So we're going to pull that item from the agenda.
3.10 will not be moving forward today.
All right, so Deanna Newman from Public Pathways, thank you for joining us today, and Harry Fix there is by your side. Thank you for today's update.
Thank you, Board Chair, and members of the Board Superintendent as well. I wanted to say that when I first came to the district in 2004, the district, the board had already hired Deanna Newman as a consultant for demographics. And in taking the job, one of the things they said to me is, well, now you'll need to work with Deanna Newman, and I kind of laughed because I had been working with her for 10 years in other districts before that point anyway, so it was a good fit. Deanna comes to us and looks at our numbers and all the data that we pulled together, and she looks and brings in a national perspective, and then breaks it down into regional and then a local perspective. And it's always nice to have that look from someone else to look at our numbers and also get the feel of, we think, we think we know where we're going, but then some of the explanations, such as Mr. Yocum spoke to, we start talking about and wondering what is maybe impacting the numbers. And of course, sometimes we don't specifically know those issues such as was raised, but we do know something is occurring, and it starts us then talking to the educational side of the house and seeing what's going on. I remember one year, it was, oh, that's right, the, some of the third graders are being retained for testing purposes, and we saw that in the numbers and so on. So these are things that we can pick up and then start planning for in the future. One of the things that we do, I must point out though, is we have such a need for capacity that, don't worry, we won't be overbuilding anytime soon. I just have to put that in there. But Deanna, if you'll go ahead, and this is the first in this series of workshops from now until about, well, hopefully before September, but until that September timeframe where we come to you and we start breaking this elephant down, if you will, piece by piece in the process of updating the capital plan. And this is just the first of that workshop where we do that demographic overview. And then we'll be scheduling eventually one-on-one meetings with board members to talk about capital plan and to talk about some of the concerns or issues that you might see as board members, and folding all that in as we update the capital plan. So, thank you, and go ahead, Deanna.
I hope Mr. Tibbetts didn't steal all my thunder here. We, what you're seeing right here is the enrollment projections, the actual October, official October enrollment. We always project from October to October, even though we are aware that the enrollment actually does change throughout the year, some up, some down, but we always go from October to October, and it is what the state does, so that's consistent with them in terms of at least their first count. We, what you see here is that, in total, it appears as though we broke even. If we were to take the pre-K out of that, though, you would see that we actually lost a few students. I expect to be within one-half of 1% in my projections on the next year enrollment projections. We were off this year. We were off by about 200 students. We had actually expected to be about 200 students higher here, and so what that does is that makes me question, where did we go wrong? Where is the numbers that were missing? And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to, as we walk through this, I'll talk a little bit about what we're seeing in terms of just this. You know, one year does not a trend make, and so we need to be careful not to get too tied up in one-year issues. So I'll try to point out when we're talking about cycles, or trends, or anomalies, because we see all of those things in terms of our projections on a regular basis. I also, every year, at least for the last four or five years, have been taking a look at what's going on with our non-conversion charters, that group that we don't know from year to year what their projections are going to be. What you see here is actually our charters did not grow last year. Our charters maintained that 839, they only went to 1839, they went to 1858. I would call that pretty stable in terms of the charters. What you see there over the course of the five years is in 2014, 15, that's when Milestone and the Arts and Humanities Charter actually closed down. So those students didn't disappear, they've been, well, some of them might have disappeared, some of them actually ended up back in our schools. What we, what I'm putting here this year, different from previous years, is I did take a look at the homeschooling numbers and the McKay Scholarship numbers. Over the last five years, the home-school numbers increased from 1750 to 2793, pretty substantial increase. So I went back and I took a look at what's happening both in the state of Florida and what's happening nationwide. In last year, there were over 3 million children who were registered as being homeschooled in the state of Florida. It's not that uncommon, and growth nationwide has been pretty significant in the past five years or so, sometimes about 7% a year. It's not uncommon for 3% of the population to actually be in home-school settings, which means actually we're below it right now. What that says to me is that there is potential growth still in the home-school population. I think that they, a couple of things are happening. First of all, in the home-school population, there is a kind of an economy that comes about as more and more home-school parents get together, form networks, begin to support each other. I think the internet has made a big difference. I think virtual schools has really helped the home-school population as well, gained a little bit of confidence that they can actually go ahead and do it. The McKay Scholarship, I just wanted to show it here, it really isn't a drop in the bucket in terms of our overall numbers and even the overall numbers of home schools or charters. It has doubled in the past five years. In total, there's been about, we got about 400 students. Bear in mind that all of our trends probably already have embedded in them a belief that some children will go home-school, some children will go charter. It's in our, it's in our student yield when we look at what our housing yield would be, it's in our trends on a school-by-school basis in terms of those who become, who are born and become kindergarteners. Some of these numbers are already in there, but it doesn't hurt for us to take a look at who they are and if they start behaving differently from what they've been behaving in the past five years. I think it is an alert. It does tell us, you know, pay attention here. So, just a reminder, when I do the enrollment projections for the school district, I use a fairly standard practice. Oh, yes.
I'm not my, sorry.
Is that the way you'd prefer it? Ask questions as we go?
It's whatever you prefer.
Go ahead.
Can you speak to the increase in the Lake Academies? That's, that looks to me to be a significant increase.
In the Lake Academy Leesburg and Lake Academy Eustis?
I mean, Leesburg isn't as high, but Eustis is a pretty high jump.
So I don't know programmatically what would have caused that. That's probably a question for somebody else.
That would be, I don't know off the top of my head, but what, because I'm seeing these numbers today.
Okay.
But, so I can't answer her numbers. I would need to go back and get her detail and then get with Judy Miller, because usually that would have dependency on what IEPs and different situations that we're creating.
Okay, thank you. I have to tell you that in some ways, I'm a statistician. I look at the numbers, I look at the trends, I try to break them apart to see what's causing them, but in some cases, it really is, it's an operating issue, or a new program, or that kind of thing. Okay.
But it's once we look at the numbers that then we can raise the question.
Right.
I understand.
Right. And again, to talk through the trend, I will look at cohort trends. It's the same thing that the state of Florida uses for their enrollment projections. I look at the birth data. My birth data does, in fact, come from the state of Florida. But I, the one thing that we can do here locally that the state can't do is that we can look at housing starts, boundary and programmatic changes. I look at outside influences such as the charters or the home-school population and try to figure out how that's affecting us. Ultimately, I do a cross-check with the Florida COFTE. The problem is that I'm ahead of them. They do their projections in June of every year, so in some ways, I am actually ahead of what they'll be looking at. They usually come very close to what I had projected eventually, so.
And they come to recognize that, too.
They have?
They, they don't tell us that. That's a side conversation.
They pay attention to us?
Yeah, they do.
So, this is a standard cohort table. Remember, I'm looking at not how many first graders there were last year, to see how many first graders next year, but how many first graders typically survive, I hate, I'm not sure I like that number, to become second graders. And this trend is good over long periods of time, over large numbers of children. It tends to be a little chaotic at the close inspection. To me, there's two areas of growth that occur. One is the natural growth, or rollover, I call it. Basically, what I'm looking at is how many fifth graders leave and how many kindergarteners come in. That's cyclical, that's purely cyclical, but it does impact our schools. And I was expecting, of course, that that number would be down, that we had more fifth graders leaving to become sixth graders and fewer kindergarteners coming in, and we'll talk about births in a bit. What we weren't anticipating is that in-migration would be negative. You'll see we have 2,200 housing permits this past year, it's not permits, certificates of occupancy. We had a lot of new houses built, and we would not anticipate that that would result in this. I think there's a couple of things. One of them might be that we had a little bit larger growth going into, let's see, home-school. I think that last year, as you remember, and do I have a little? Yes. You remember last year, we were really struggling with this whole idea that there were so many more fourth graders than usual. Remember, the pattern is such that we tend to have more third graders and fewer fourth graders. That's really not true. It's not like we get a whole bunch of fourth graders. It's how we classify the children after testing. And as you remember, last year in October, we were dealing with some legislation that caused us to actually report things a little different. So it's not, it's entirely possible that this number actually is a bit of an anomaly as a result of last year's record-keeping. And so, we don't know. What I do know is that this year turned out to be trend-wise exactly what we have been seeing for years and years, right? More third graders, fewer fourth graders. All right?
Can I ask again? So, okay. So the decrease from third grade to fourth grade is after we give them the FSA reading, right? And then they don't pass? Correct? And so we have a decrease, that 180, 144, 135, 183, 44, and then 170?
Mm-hmm.
That red column? Those are the kids who didn't pass the FSA and then didn't get to fourth grade?
So it's actually, it shows up in the third, they show up in the third grade. In essence, they show up as third graders instead of fourth graders. So it makes it look like we lose all of these fourth graders, like it makes it look like we lost 183 fourth graders.
Right.
Right? But in fact, they might actually be in the 139 additional third graders here because they didn't disappear, nor did we greatly increase in the third grade. You see some of that as we get into the high schools as well, where students who don't, who don't pass in, let's say, all their ninth grade classes end up being, showing up in the 10th grade. It's confusing in terms, but if you, in the end, it's a wash. In the end, it's a wash.
Is that 44 of the year, that's the year that we had the amendment? The 44 is the year we had the amendment that we could determine at the local level?
I believe that's why that is that way. That's my guess.
If the kids passed? That's the anomaly you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can see it's an anomaly in the sense that that is not what we typically show. And this is not typical, this is not only here in Lake County, this is across the state of Florida, that you see the same, exactly the same trend. Just in numbers.
I like numbers.
Just to sidetrack here, we'll talk a little bit about the birth numbers. As many of you know, we, back during the recession, as is typical during recessions, people don't have babies. That's a nationwide trend. One of the things that we had anticipated is that as soon as we came out of the recession, that people would begin to have babies, but what we found, of course, is that the millennial generation wasn't quite ready. They had gone through kind of a rough time, they'd come of age right at the beginning of the recession and had a lot of debt, and they didn't start having babies like we thought they would.
And some of them are still living at home.
Right, some are, they're living at home, they're not married, they're marrying late. So, we'll talk a little bit about trends and cycles later on to see whether, because remember, the millennials are only, they're in the, they're 20 to 35. Some of the decisions they're making really are because they're young, but some of them, like the ones that are in their 30s to 35 period, they did come of age at a tough time. So however, and so what happened to that is that our births, which were all the way up at 3580 back in 2006, began to drop, 3398, 3193, 3119. We're really bottoming out right now in terms of the birth numbers, and what you're looking at here is births five years prior, right? So I'm basing this on kindergarten. And so what that does is that creates kind of an opposite of the baby boom. It kind of creates a baby trough. And it's now just beginning, it's coming into our kindergarten, elementary schools right now and causing us a problem. The other piece that I'm looking at right here is really the number of children that become kindergarteners based on who was born five years earlier, and that number right there is higher. It's, back during the housing recession, the numbers had dropped all the way down to .85, .88. It's now that we're seeing more housing, we're seeing more people move into the county between birth and kindergarten, and therefore, that number has gotten up to .96. I'm anticipating that number stays somewhere in that area, not going up to the over 1% as it was back during a time when we really were seeing huge amounts of housing and in-migration. So, and of course, you'll see the impact of this as this number begins to climb, the number of kindergartens begin to climb, and we kind of climb out of this. It's just a cycle. Middle school trends, we had anticipated that the incoming sixth grade would be smaller than the outgoing eighth grade. We knew that we were going to lose middle school students. We had hoped for a little bit more in-migration here, but it's zero. It's not uncommon in the middle schools. Most people do move into new housing in particular when their children are in elementary school and become much less mobile as their children become high school students. In the night, in the high schools, we typically look at the incoming ninth grade, and again, the incoming ninth grade here was a little bit smaller than previous ones. We did anticipate some amount of loss there, but we were hoping that some of that would be mitigated by just generally larger ninth grades coming in than 12th grades. And of course, what you're seeing here is, and let me just point out, this is the October count. When the state looks at our numbers, they will actually average out our October and our spring count, and they actually show a lower number at the high school level than we do. It's not, it's not a good way to plan your facilities because we still have to have seats in the fall, but it is for them when they think about how much money they're going to give us for those students. One of the things we can look at is building activity. We do look at certificates of occupancy, and we look at permits. What I show you is certificates of occupancy as a way that I think tracks a little bit better. As you can see, most are, we, from a low of 706 in 2011, we've gotten back up to certificates of occupancy of 2253. To give you some idea, in, back in 2006, it was at 6,500. So we still are only a third of the way back to where we were back at the booming time in the mid to late 2000s. Most of them are in Lake County, most of them are actually in Southern Lake County. All of those, for example, in the Four Corners area would be in this number. What you can see is the next highest there is Clermont.
I just want to say, which, when Deanna says most of them are Lake County, that means unincorporated Lake County, all of these, of course, are.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. I think, I think one of the things we do need to be attentive to is that, you know, Mount Dora and Taverri's also have quite a bit in theirs. One of, these are, let me point out, too, these are non-age restricted. If I had put in age restricted, you would see Fruitland Park just like way up there because we had over 700 age-restricted certificates of occupancy, but these are only non-age.
I have a question real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Is it, there by Grassy Lake, is that in Mineola or is that county where all that construction is going on?
A lot of it is in Mineola.
Okay. So this is just a certificate of occupancy only, no permits?
Uh-huh, yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah, that is. Let me make my next point, and that is, my next point is that our permits, in fact, are up.
Another thousand.
Up another thousand. So, we're looking at permits of 3,200, in which case, then, if they all become COs next year, they, it will be up.
And Mr. Gamble, we've actually driven that neighborhood that you're referencing and seen the activity. I've prescribed it to Deanna. We'll actually be going down there later today to speak with some of those principals especially and do, if we can get down the road, literally in that neighborhood, show her some of that and how that's popping up so rapidly.
Well, I know they had stated back in August, September, somewhere in there, there's like 5,000 homes supposed to be going from 50 to all the way to 561. So, that's, and that's in the next three years.
Right. We've been waiting for them to come in. Yeah.
Okay. But is that, is that restricted growth on the one side? And then on the other, I know it's family?
And most of it is family.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm assuming.
Is Leesburg left out for a reason?
Yes, pardon?
Leesburg.
Leesburg, they are not here because they did not provide us their certificate of occupancies for last year.
I will say, in their defense, a lot of theirs is age-restricted, in which, where their CEO's are. A lot, in their defense, a lot of the numbers that are coming from Leesburg are in age-restricted numbers. There's not a lot of, that's not age-restricted.
So, we actually, you'll notice that we have about, we have at least 55 active developments. Most of them are in Grassy Lake, Taveries. Taveries, anybody driving through there would see that. In the Sorento Sawgrass and Round Lake areas, where most of our active developments really are right now. One of the things, one of the great advantages we have here is that we actually have a private company that tracks our, that somebody from Harry's office works with them and helps to track where the, where in terms of development, CCOs are going. In any given quarter, we know what's under construction, what has actually been completed. I would love to have them work in every one of my school districts because it's absolutely fabulous information.
Where we use them is while we, while we track and know what developments are being approved and coming through the process, the role that they help us with is knowing the market absorption. So, they're letting us know how many are actually being absorbed into the market. We know how many are being CO'd or are building permit.
Right.
The other question I have, on the Clermont, down around Sawgrass Bay and that area down there, is that all considered Clermont or Lake County?
That's in Lake County.
Okay.
The, I have to say that the ability to get this information actually, in some ways, is a great thanks to concurrency. Concurrently actually allowed us to start this kind of communication and get this kind of information from the cities and counties. We have student yields. We figure them out on a regular basis. Sometimes, we go back and actually look at specific areas of the county. We would like to say that the student yields, when a house is CO'd, that they ultimately, that they deliver those number, for example, we, 150, for 100 homes, we get 15 elementary school students. But, and in general, over time, that's true. But on a specific basis, for example, this year, where we had all of those COs and we did not generate the kind of elementary school students we expected, it's not always a direct correlation in the year in which it occurs. Our yields are based on the life of that house over time, and sometimes, it just doesn't work out immediately.
And I would say, and I would say that when you have an economy that's been following a trend, a good trend, that would work out. But this is something that you could expect to see after a recession anyway, is there's been a pent-up demand, and yet, the families, if you will, haven't caught up to that house size yet.
Right. And it's complicated. And, you know, the enrollment projections are a little bit complicated. And actually, if you bear with me, I want to make a short, take a short deviation right here, talk a little bit about trends and cycles, and how complicated, how they will complicatedly overlap with each other. A trend basically is a, is an activity that occurs over time. It actually includes cycles. Sometimes, we don't know we're in a cycle until we get to the end of it. The baby boom generation is a good example. We, where school districts ran out and built all of these houses thinking it was a trend, and in fact, it was a cycle. And by 1980, enrollments began to decline. So, sometimes, we have to be careful that when we think long-term, we build for trends and not for cycles. Population and growth, and enrollment growth in this county is a trend, but that doesn't mean that we do it every year. And we're seeing that right now. When I say birth rates, I'm talking about the children per household. Birth rates have been falling in this country since, well, actually, before the war. And that's a trend that's occurring. But the number of births every year often tends to be stuck in cycles, like baby boomers or recessions when nobody has babies. So, that's a cycle. Prices, we know prices have a tendency to go up and down, but we know prices have gone up. Since the 1930s, prices have gone up. And they, and so, that's a trend. Just like I mentioned, the millennials, they are having their children later, but that's a trend. Actually, baby boomers had their babies later, and Generation X had their babies later. And so, it's really a trend. So, and so, I just wanted to point out, these cycles is something that we need to be careful to say, oh, that is a cycle. Let's make sure we're planning long-term. The last one here, I really wanted to talk a little bit about, and it goes to some of the comments we've received from principals this year about neighborhoods. If you look at real estate, neighborhoods have basically three cycles. Some might say four, but I'm gonna say three here. When it's newly developed, and that, when it's newly developed, that first 10, 15 years, we get a lot of children out of a new development. But as those children move through the public schools and then move on to college, neighborhoods tend to mature. Parents don't move right away. It may take a while before then those neighborhoods begin revitalizing. So, if you think about it, many of our developments that were built in the 1990s and early 2000s actually are moving into their mature period. And this is kind of coming in direct overlap, almost exacerbated by the low birth rates. And I wanted to show you a couple of schools down in the South that, where we have some older developments that were, not older, I shouldn't say they're older, but they're not new. And in the whole baby boom issue, baby trough issue. So, if you look at Grassy Lake here, for example, they are going to be graduating this year, 195 fifth graders. But if the trend holds true, we think they're only going to have 135 kindergarteners. Wow. That's a big difference. So, that they will begin the year with 60 fewer children, unless, of course, through in migration, from new housing, they pick that up. Same, Groveland, 140 leaving, 105 coming in. Lost Lake, 100, and we are going to be visiting that principal today, 197 fifth graders leaving, 140 is what we anticipate to be their kindergarten coming in, right? It's a combination. It's aging. It's the lower birth rates in our smaller kindergartens. So, this kind of, this kind of neighborhood cycle is occurring in some of those areas that were just booming 20 years ago.
Of the existing homes, though.
Of the existing homes. Correct.
To the point that they're adding more homes, just as you said, through migration.
Because this doesn't necessarily suggest that Grassy Lake is going to decline in enrollment by 60 because of the immigration factor there. So, that's the one thing to consider as we're looking at this chart, that-
Yes. What you're looking at is what is, is that, they, I probably have 40 students of in migration or better coming into Grassy. But that's not on top of who they are today, right? That's, that I have growth built into Lost Lake. And, but, but not-
But that's part of the point, is why, you know, why we don't see the numbers at that school going off the page, so to speak. We're seeing them maintain and growing a little bit, where when we look at the housing starts, we would think, why isn't it growing even faster? But because of this, these other factors coming into play at the same time.
Right. Absolutely. So, I just, again, a cycle. In a couple of years, they will go much higher because we will have worked our way through this cycle, and we won't be showing it this way again. Okay? So, anticipation of our enrollment projections, I'm showing actually that another year of smaller kindergartens and larger fifth grades going out probably will affect us another three years. And then after that, the kindergarten actually begins to grow. And after, actually, after 2022, we're going to see some pretty significant growth in our elementary schools. And I really, all in all, we're showing about plus 412 over the five-year period. That's not too different from what we were showing last year about this time. The, again, I'm assuming that kindergarten will increase in the later years. Housing is up. I wanted to actually choose, go three years out. I'm going out to 2020. I am not a firm believer that the projections are solid, completely solid after the first three years. And I wanted to try to give you a look at where, what our space available or needed might be in that 2020. And the reason I'm picking that year is you notice that that also is just the beginning of the upturn in the enrollment, right? Just at the very beginning. After that, enrollment is scheduled to go up, up, up. And at that point, we're showing about 900 seats available. Now, it's worth taking a look at some of these numbers for, I think, three things are going to impact these numbers. The first one will be that eventually, we are going to be building a school down in the Four Corners area. It's going to impact Sawgrass Bay. I think that we have, I think there's a potential charter that's going to be going in that may affect places like Lost Lake or Grassy Lake and/or Mineola Charter, that it's going to be kind of in that general vicinity, and those numbers could come down as a result of a new charter in that area. And lastly, this, this new legislation, and I know you've been working quite a bit on this whole point of choice. These numbers that you see here are based on past trends. This year, next year, as we see choice kind of kick in, and we see what kind of choices people might want to make, we might see some schools up and some schools down associated with choice as there's space available.
I'm sorry. How did you get the Cypress Ridge and Treadway and Taveries?
Okay. So, all of these are their enrollment 2020 compared to their FISH permanent capacity. So, if there's relocatables on site, that's not showing here. But this would be basically their permanent capacity.
I guess my question is, why are they so big? Like, I could see Round Lake because of the extension, but why Taveries? What's happening in Taveries and Treadway?
Okay. So, Taveries and Treadway actually are currently over capacity. In fact, they're currently over capacity, Treadway is currently over capacity at about that same number.
Right. So, what's happening? What?
In terms of how, with the solution.
Isn't this a decrease of 260 kids?
No, no, no. No, no. These, this is space available. In essence, if I take this 929 enrollment and I match it to their capacity, their FISH capacity, and maybe I should have had that column in here.
This is saying seat.
Seats available or need, oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay. I understand now.
All right. Yes. I'm sorry. I've kind of transitioned onto-
My fault.
...space available or needed from enrollment.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I just wanted to kind of, I guess, give your enrollment projections some context so that you could kind of see how it's really affecting. This is your middle schools. Your middle schools probably will grow over the next three to five years and before they ultimately see the cycling that we're seeing in the elementary schools. But right now, they're getting much larger sixth grades, and I think we probably will see that. The nice thing is, and growth of about 376. The nice thing in the middle schools is that we have a fair amount of space in the middle schools right now. The only school that really is impacted is Wendy Hill. And Wendy Hill with, will hopefully be also addressed with the school that's being built down in the Four Corners area. As for the high schools, they grow more gradually because of the movement of students in and out of the school for various reasons. Still expecting about 600 student growth in the high schools. The impact of the lower grades coming through is not shown here because it's beyond the 2022 period. I do want to, though, point out that same 2020 line. We still have growth after 2020, and our high schools are impacted pretty much in the South. It makes it look like we have space available in the high schools in 2020, but we have, but that space is pretty predominantly in Leesburg and in Eustis, although that's a confusing number for Eustis because it, yeah, let's just say it's in Leesburg. And the, and our schools that are impacted are East Ridge and South Lake. Could be different. Once we see some choice, maybe some of that also will be down here in Lake Mineola. But there's a trend here. I'm trying to see that these are East Ridge and South Lake. If we back up, we'll see that the school impacted is Wendy Hill. And if we back up, we'll see that the school impacted are places like South Sawgrass and Lost Lake. I point that out. We are reaching pretty much the end of our line for concurrency down in the South County area. It's not something we've had to think about up to this point, but we have, we are there. We are out of space down in the South County. That's my presentation.
Any other questions?
I want to say thank you for answering my questions as I went.
No, no problem.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay.
So, I guess, I guess the takeaway from that is that we do need to definitely build a school down, down south.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, and just over the horizon, you're going to be needing to build some more.
Yes. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. The next topic on our agenda is the team update.
Okay. I'm gonna have Ms. Marshall and her team and Mr. Clatt. Ms. Marshall and Mr. Clatt are co-chairs of the team committee, and we wanted to give you an update on this.
We did meet with you all in the fall and went over the 2016, '17 team plan. At that time, we also indicated that, you had some questions, and we also indicated that we were analyzing data from last year, and we would be going back to look at some possible revisions to the team plan. So, that's what we'd like to present to you this morning.
All right. Just a little background. The team committee was established, what, eight, seven, eight, 10 years ago. And the idea was to have a joint committee equally of teachers and administration to develop teacher evaluation data. And because the legislature tied evaluation to compensation, it also becomes a mandatory subject of bargaining. As you can see, the list of members on the committee, a nice cross-section of teachers from elementary, middle, high, special areas. And so, we try to look at all of the aspects that's going to affect a teacher evaluation. And if you remember, when you looked at data the last time, there were some anomalies in that data, and the team committee came back together to try to develop some strategies to address those anomalies. Overall, the evaluation right now is 45%. It's called individual practice, observations by their individuals administrator. Mr. Tibbet did talk about some calibration issues. That's always an issue that we're working on to make sure that the same evaluation is going to happen to a same teacher, no matter which administrator does the evaluation. Then we have 20% is- Then we have 20% is deliberate practice, which in the age of personalized learning, this is an attempt to do personalized learning with teachers so they can develop a plan of what they see as their weakness area, which will improve their practice. And then the SPM is the Student Progression Measurement, sometimes called VAM, but it, VAM is specifically for FSA. So, there are some other tests, some other things that we utilize to try to, to determine student progress.
Okay, one of the areas that we wanted to take a closer look at is teachers who were tied exclusively to a VAM score. There was not a second measure. We took, we took a look at that and one, and certainly grades three through five is, is the first time that that happens. Team committee spent a long time looking at this issue and considered whether to add iStation and iReady data to the VAM to compile the student performance measure. And in this case, the team voted unanimously, unanimously not to do that, not to use iStation and iReady. When we ran the models verse on the current year scores, reducing the student performance measure impact on the final evaluation score from 50%, 50% to 35% took care of that concern. So, the team did vote not to use, not to make a change in the grades three through five at this time. There was going to be a negative impact on some teachers who were at the highly effective level if we had done that. Carrying on, the next area or the next group of teachers who have only a VAM score and not other measures was middle school. A year, two years ago, we implemented using final exams at the high school level. The team committee did vote unanimously to revise the plan this year to include the teacher final exam with the VAM score to comprise the student performance measure for middle school teachers in the grade six through eight.
Was this sort of an option given to elementary schools? I know that they don't give final exams, but they do give final grades. Was that sort of an option even given to elementary teachers?
No, there, it is very complicating the kinds of grades given. In this case, we, we need a measure and because the elementary schools do not consistently give a final exam, we did not feel that there was a way to do a grade. Some, some teachers don't give grades, special area teachers don't have grades at, at some grade level. So, it's, it was not a measure that we could consistently do across all elementaries.
Grades aren't considered standard-based?
In this case, not all, when the students go to the media center for some of the enrichment areas, they don't have grades that we could have used to factor into that.
I, I guess, you know, to, to further complicate that, teachers grade very differently in how they weight subjects and how they weight assignments differently. You might walk into one room and it seems like your language arts grade is entirely what you got on spelling test because this occurs every week. You walk into another room where a teacher will have specifically weighted it down so it doesn't appear that your entire language arts grade is that. And so, I mean, that's, that's just one example of, of ways that they just vary from, from classroom to classroom. I think there's just too much deviation in terms of how they're assigned at the elementary level that, I don't know how you could.
Right, well, and, and a fourth grade teacher may teach multiple subjects and then it's like, well, how, which of the grades are we going to take? And whereas at the middle and high school level, they are subject-specific. So, so at this time, we did not do that.
I would argue the same deviation occurs at middle and high school level, but I like, I'm fine with that deviation, but.
Right, but at middle school, they're, they're not using the final grades, they're using the final exam.
An actual exam.
So, that exam, you know, I guess, kind of tries to equalize it more than the grades would, right? Because if you use the grades at middle school, you'd find the same issue that you'd have at elementary, I'm sure.
I mean, that is something we could explore more fully, but for this year, that is not a recommendation for elementary. So, we, we did a vote to unanimously to incorporate the final exam, the teacher-made final exam for grades six through eight. Same thing at the high school level. We will use the teacher final, teacher-developed final exam for VAM eligible subjects in grade levels to provide a second measure. There, now, it's complicated because if it's, you're in a mandated end-of-course exam, a state end-of-course exam subject, you are not able to give a final exam. So, we had to come up with a rule for that. So, if we don't have VAM or end-of-course exam data, then we'll, then the PSAT, ACT, SAT, PERT will be 80% final, 80% of the student performance measure with the final exam being 20. If there is no final exam data, then the VAM or end-of-course exam would be 50% and then the, the national measures would also be 50%. And that was a unanimous vote to, of the entire committee to handle it that way. And we did look at models, taking our current year data and projecting them. Had this been, rule been in place, what it would have looked like. So, it was based on analysis of information that we had available.
How are you handling the EOC? Like, for example, the Altra EOC test scores across the state are just horrific, like, like 50% of, like, you can have a five and 50%, and you've, and you still fail 50%.
The, the state sends us a VAM, they send us the rating.
They send a VAM?
They send, they send us, they value, you know, they send us the rating, so we, we have no option but to take the rating that they give us. Another area of concern has been ESE teachers. And so, we spent some time looking at this. And we are going to, we have been using IEP goals for teachers of students with more significant disabilities and those in self-contained classrooms. We're going to expand that concept to all ESE teachers to allow the teacher to have the option to submit student data on progression on IEP goals that we will consider in, with the other measure that they are given, be it VAM or one of the other measures. This is voluntary. So, if a teacher wants to use this option, they may submit their data and we have provided, Mr. Zamora has created a form that's making it consistent and a little bit easier for teachers, has drop-down boxes for teachers to submit that data to us. So, if the ESE teacher, any teacher in the district submits the data, we will use that in their student performance measures. If they don't, if they choose not to submit, then we'll just calculate it based on the plan that's in place.
Sorry, again, is that per student or is it per teacher? Like, is, can it, because if a teacher has like five ESE kids, is it per student?
The teacher would send us IEP data on their, on the students that are on their roster.
Okay, if, if she has students A, B, C, D, and E, can she have A, B, and C have the IEP data and VAM on D and E?
Okay, we are, we have to use the VAM data. So, if we have VAM data on all five of those students, then, then we have to use it. There's not the option of not using it. The IEP goals would be in addition to.
I think her question is, could the teacher just submit the IEP goals for the three kids that succeeded and leave the two out? Or does the teacher have to submit all five? Is it all or nothing?
So, the teacher can choose the students. They get two goals per student. They can choose the students that they want to submit for and they choose the goals. So, a student may have five goals and they select which two.
Okay. And, and that was a unanimous vote of the committee to use, to allow the use of IEP data at the teacher's discretion. And now, Ms. Gogus will cover advanced placement.
So, another area that we looked at was advanced placement for a couple of reasons. One reason was that it was one measure. And another reason was that there are very different passing rates and levels of difficulty with AP courses. So, the first, the first thing we addressed was the different levels of AP courses. And in Lake County, many schools really want to expose as many children as possible to rigorous curriculum. So, students will take AP courses that, that may not have taken any before or taken such rigorous courses, but we, we want to expose them to it. So, we looked at the passing rates because some of the more difficult courses, the passing rates, obviously statewide as well as nationally. But we looked at statewide because Florida does have an initiative to expose children to rigorous curriculum similar to Lake County. And so, we looked at the statewide averages. And a way that we thought was easy to understand and would be easy to assess was to take courses that had a 50% and above passing rate at three and above and courses that had below 50% passing rate across the state of Florida. And if you take a look at the next page, those are the assessments of courses with 50% or higher on the left and below 50% are on the right. And the, what we discussed, we have a passing rate. We do AP courses with a passing rate. When we calculate them, we use a passing rate for level two and above because of some of the, the situations that we said about really bringing in students to rigorous curriculum. So, we use just for evaluative purposes, we use a level two and above and we were consistent across the board with a passing rate. But when we looked at that data, Mr. Zamora really gave us a great overview of the differences in those passing rates statewide. I mean, it really was significant. So, one of the options that we talked about was what if we broke it down to above 50% passing rate and below 50% passing rate? And we had two tables for passing rates. We had, so if you look, we added, actually, the, the committee voted unanimously for this option of having an above 50% and a below, below 50% table. And so, the one highlighted in yellow is new this year. And that addresses a much lower passing rate statewide course and differentiates it from a 50% or above course, making it more, leveling the playing field for the diff, and taking into accountability the differences in the difficulty in the courses. So, that was what we discussed and you see the differences, you see the two sides of courses. And so, the course that is below 50% will go with the second table down and the other courses above 50%, 50% or above will adhere to the first table.
So, certainly, I think this has been one of, that was, I think, one of my initial crusades was AP. And so, I was interested to see how this was going to, if it was going to, to resolve the situation. And, and so, I, I looked back at our data and how it compared against the state averages in every subject last year. And, and specifically, the ones that are in that new lower table there, the below 50%. And, and I think I'm struggling to even find one, a subject that is meeting 65% threshold. And in some of these subjects, the range, we are 20 to 40 points below the state average on that. And so, so that prompted me with the question of why are we so far below the state average that this still doesn't even fix it?
Well, remember that the passing rates on that state average table, that's a pass at three and above.
Right.
Our data, we're using two and above.
And so, then when I looked back and recomputed the number, percentage of students getting a two or above across the state versus our percentage of students getting two across this, you know, on the exam, we're still 25 to 40 points below the state average of the number of students getting a two.
I'm concerned by this, too.
And, and so, that, that prompted me, I mean, going beyond just the evaluation purposes here, but the bigger question is, why are our AP students struggling when they get to the exam against the state average? Why, why are they so far? I mean, economics, microeconomics, it's 45 points difference between the number of students getting a two and the state versus us. I think there are only a handful of subjects where we were beating or meeting the state average and that was because there were like less than 10 students taking the exam. You know, so that's, that's really, you know, I don't know that, that's incredibly statistically relevant. But other than that, we're not beating or even coming close to the state on, on almost every subject. So.
Which would, as me being like a science teacher, like having, I would not want to be an AP teacher.
So, in chemistry, and, and I think this is where your PhD is, right?
Yes.
So, in chemistry, the state average for the students getting two or above was 72.71, but in Lake County, it was 28.95, a difference of 44 points that we're missing the state average on two or above in chemistry.
Right, which would guarantee me a needs improving likely, unless I was some sort of magician.
Well, the, these, the, correct, and that data is, is of concern to us as we were looking at that and, you know, we have had discussions with the academic services department to, you know, to point out what we discovered and I think that they're aware of it. But you remember too, that these teachers are also, they're not taking just this as their score, they're also using ACT, PERT, SAT, PSAT. So, it is, that, those scores are mitigated somewhat by that.
And I, I did want to add, there were a few things in place. One, AP only took AP, so those concerns were mitigated. And so, there are three things. One is the student performance measures were lowered from 50% to 35%. Two, there are two tables. And three, they were just one measure. And as Mrs. Marshall said, we added a variety of measures to them. So, I, I think that all of our, all of our models show that there'll be a significant improvement, but, but that's not going to address the other area.
Yeah, well, I, and I, I think the idea of splitting into a couple of tables is helpful, but looking at the district average, for those courses below 50%, we don't have a single district average that meets 65%. Now, I know, granted, that's the district average, so there might be some teachers who, who get there and, you know, I don't have the data down to that particular level. But, you know, I, I don't know, I guess that's still a level of concern for me. That being one, the second is, well, maybe the bigger concern academically is why are we so far below the state average on, in AP courses?
So, to me, there's two questions, there's two issues here. There's the issue of having a fair and equitable evaluation system for teachers that teach advanced placement. And I think the team committee has been trying to wrestle with that to make sure that a teacher isn't negatively impacted if it's without, outside of their control. To me, what you have raised is a bigger issue in addition to, not that this one isn't a big issue, but in addition to, that is separate from this. And where I am coming from is if we set aside the team discussion on evaluation, I'm just looking at student performance, the outcomes on advanced placement. And they are not where they need to be. They're not to the level. And so, we are actually having to go back and say, the question you've raised, why is that? Why is, if you look at the state average, you look at our average, why is there such a difference? Well, and, and this is where you have to do a much deeper analysis than just looking at the data, just looking at two and above or three and above. What we don't know is where the state average has come from. Are they, what, the placement of students into AP courses? That's a huge factor here and there is not consistency there. In our district, what some of our high schools have done is they have said, we want rigorous and because we have Avid and we have that access and the push for college and career readiness, we actually have given more students an opportunity to take AP exams than maybe in another district. Another district may say, you're only taking an AP course if you have this foundational course sequence and you get there. And so, they may have a very strong academic background before they take that AP class. In our district, we have high schools that don't have an honors program anymore. And so, the students go in there. I have a concern over that, I have to tell you, to be honest. In, in theory, it sounds wonderful because you're stretching as many students as possible, you're giving more students access to that. The concern that I have is that, and what I'm seeing from some of our data just in general, is that if you teach to the middle, then over here, you may not be stretching those students that are those high performing, high performers to where they're getting a year's worth of growth for the year of instruction. Are they being stretched to the same pacing as you are the students here or the students that are level ones and twos where you're stretching them and you need to get a year and a half, year's worth of growth there? I have concerns about our, our students that fall in this upper level. You know, I look at Cypress Ridge Elementary, I look at some of our students that are in those advanced, in those level fours and fives. Our level fours, are they staying level fours or, or moving up to level fives? Because with the new accountability system. Because with the new accountability system, if you, if you are a level four in third grade and when you get to fourth grade, if you don't grow enough, you're dropping to a level three in fourth grade and yet you may have had a higher score than you did. And that's just, you know, that, that rigor has to be there. Algebra or advanced placement is a real area. So I see these two issues working the same. And so my concern is the level of rigor. I want to look at analysis that if we were to pull the students that may not have as foundational of a academic course sequencing up to, if you dissected and disaggregated the data that way and looked at it, where would we fall? Again, that's where that comparison is hard to make to the state because I don't know the schools, other school districts, if they have an honors program and they start segregating, if you will, in that respect.
Yeah, and I think certainly I'm, I'm well aware that, you know, the, the more students you put in there who might not necessarily have normally qualified for an AP course, that impacts the numbers. And I guess my big question was, are we putting so many students in there that that's skewing the numbers or are we still falling short on our AP instruction?
Yeah, and that's where we have to disaggregate the data at this point in time from last year moving in before we get to, you know, much further. That's one of the things, academic services and Mr. Farley's office, they're going to have to finish that work before we'll know the answer to that question.
So I taught, when I taught, I taught Gen Chem, like one, at Georgia Tech. And those kids that came in with threes on their AP chemistry, they were good, they were solid. They knew what they were doing and I never had one that was going to lose, what was a hope, we call it hope scholarship in Georgia, that was, like, they, they weren't the ones coming to me, like, if I don't pass this class, I'm going to lose my scholarship. Every student at Georgia Tech had to take chemistry. So my question is, given that it sets a standard, the AP sets a standard, if we're shoving kids in this that don't really belong there, why are we forcing our teachers to be on a scale that isn't Lake County specific? If we want to do something that's beyond what AP demands, what, we should be looking at a scale that's beyond, that's a Lake County scale, that's not the state AP scale?
This is a Lake County scale, we just use the state AP data to determine which courses had pass rate of 50% or above and 50% below, but this is specific to us.
I know, but we should be using the Lake County data, not the state data, that's what I'm saying. If, if only 25% of our kids pass, then, and then those, those, that should be your highly effective range.
Well, we, we wrestled with that issue some too. All of our other teachers are, are compared to state data and actually the state sends us a rating for that. We, we feel like this is going to make a big difference. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, help, doesn't completely eliminate the concern, but with the fact that we're using a split scale now to differentiate among, between the courses, we are using other data besides just this, we're combining it with national exam data, PSAT, SAT, et cetera, and the fact that the student performance measure has dropped from 50% of this, the final evaluation rating to 35% of the evaluation rating. Our AP teachers should see, we, we should have a reduction in AP teachers receiving a needs improvement. Clearly, there are other, many, very challenging and important questions about what students are in these courses and how they're performing, where, where is the breakdown? Those things have got to be solved. The team committee, you know, those are, that's beyond the purview of the team committee. We had to try to do what we, the best we could, given the data we have and with the, the models that we ran based on the current year's data.
So when a teacher comes to us and says, I lost $10,000 in, because I got a needs improvement and I can't get the bright scholars, are we going to make them whole?
No, but that, that happens to teachers whether they're teaching AP or anything else.
But we're setting them up for failure here.
Well, remember, most, most AP teachers are not teaching AP, or many AP teachers are not teaching AP all day, so they also have VAM data, they have their final exam data. This AP piece for many teachers is a, when it's standalone, is a small part. I, I don't know what message we want to send if we're going to say, you know, 10% is effective or highly effective.
That's, that, that, your point's well taken and I, and here's my concern, is that if we start making it that, you know, 25% is highly effective, I, without disaggregating the data, see how it really falls, my concern is then you may be awarding a highly effective in a situation where the students were prepared and they're, the, the course didn't have the rigor in it. I mean, that, that's the dilemma. We need to determine what is causing it to, with, with much greater certainty than we are now. We're trying to build those safeguards in there and I, I think this is a step in the right direction, but I want to be very, very careful that we don't adjust this scale down to a point to where we're not recognizing what the root cause is. And then you may be, I have some concerns that we have situations where there may be students in there that I recognize that may get in there and they're getting a one or a two. And, and that's, and they're doing well, but they just didn't have the foundation. But I also believe we may have some situations, and I don't know this for a fact, but I think just, that's, you know, just the standard, is that we may have some situations where we need to get in there and work on some of the rigor, too. And to, to just, just do this and adjust that scale down, we may be not do, we may be doing a disservice.
Is this something that the, the students are placed into or they, they asked to be put into these AP classes? Because I had a couple of parents confront me months back and said, hey, we've asked that our, our child be taken out of this and they said, no, wait till after this certain date, that way we get them counted.
I think there's, I think there's, I'm going to answer your question, there are, are all kinds of scenarios and it's probably both. I, students do choose to go in there and many students do choose to go in there. We have some students that they, they have the potential and through counseling and working with the parents and some recommendations, they're encouraged to go in there and they agree that they're going in there. We do have some situations where a student will get in there and for whatever reason, when they're not passing, they want to get opt out and come right out. And it's very, and, and so there's, that goes through counseling with the guidance counselor and the parent and the principal. And so there are some situations where a student has been encouraged to, to remain through the semester or whatever, not, not necess, I mean, they're in the school, so it's not an FTE question. It's a matter of not letting them just drop out when it gets a little tough.
I, I just want to say that I'm going to let it lie, I think this is a step in the right direction. I don't think we're there and I think that considering we have been asking for two years for, it, it's time to disaggregate the data. So, and then that's all I'll just say.
And I, I would agree that this is a step, you know, I guess I'd challenge, next steps would be, of course, to disaggregate that data to purely understand what's causing some of these, these disparities. But then also, I think we'll probably find that it might be appropriate to create even more tiers of, of a level, you know, and, and just as we're arguing on one end, you know, how hard it is to get highly effective, boy, if you teach Spanish language and you've got a 99% passage rate of two and above nationwide, statewide, and we mirror that here in Lake County, you could be 24 points below the state average and still be highly effective. And so, so that's, that's where I struggle on that one. But then there are, there are three tests in that below 50 category, state average don't even get 50, 65% two and above. And, and so it seems like if you teach human geography, macro or microeconomics, you're doomed because you're, you're going to come to the state average and still be short of highly effective. So I think that's, that's probably where we've got some more opportunities.
Right, and certainly, and we can, well, we will analyze the data that comes in from this year. And again, we have multiple things that have changed this year, that, a big one being the 35% instead of 50% of the teacher evaluation rating being based on student performance. But message well, well taken, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we, we came earlier in the year and we talked about changing our deliberate practice. We changed it from having a baseline score and ending with, a, a baseline score set by teachers and an ending score set by administrator, their evaluator. So when we talked about the new plan, which is they select their target, they write their plan, the principal acknowledges the plan, and then they come together at the end of the year. If the plan was completed, it's an effective score. If the plan is completed and they provide evidence that shows that it's had a positive impact either on student achievement or their team or their colleagues, that it would then be deemed highly effective. So as we got into that scoring practice, it became apparent that we, we needed a little bit more definition in order to have consistency in scoring across the board. So a, a rubric was designed and put into place and the committee came together and we looked at this again. And the committee came up with some suggestions to help clarify even more. So what's in yellow is what's new and we wanted to define for a teacher, starting at the top. If you have stated in your plan that you're going to provide two sources of data and one of those sources shows a positive impact, that would be deemed highly effective. We, we didn't really have that mapped out and we didn't want some principals asking for three data points showing positive impact, another asking for two, another asking for five. We wanted to make that more clear and more defined so that everybody's on the same page, especially with this being the first year that the new plan is in place. So we, we talked and talked and then that was the end result for showing you can have multiple data sources, at least one of them needs to show some positive impact. Additionally, because there's no baseline score set, there really isn't a need anymore not to be able to get back in there and change. It's a working document, it's a teacher's professional growth plan. You may go along and say, wow, here's some really great positive data that I wasn't expecting. I want to now include that. Or I'm looking at this and I think I'm going to make a change because it's not what I thought, but, and so I, I think I'm going to look at maybe taking a different look at this. So the committee felt it was important to let teachers know that this is a working document and they're welcome to make changes, it will not be locked, they can go in at any time and make changes as they see fit. And so this was the original rubric, those are the changes that were made and now the committee voted unanimously for this rubric.
Going forward for next year, I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry, there were two abstentions, yes, two people abstained and the rest of the committee voted for it. So it was actually voted yes, eight, eight committee members voted yes and two abstained. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Going forward for next year, I'd like to throw out an item perhaps that you all might be able to clarify as teachers are completing their, their initial DPP and setting them up. And that's how specific they need to be with the evidence that they're providing, that some teachers I heard from said, oh, I just have to say, I'm going to pull data from I station, but didn't have to give any sort of specific metric. And other teachers said, oh, I had to, I had to go in and say, I expect to see this amount of growth. And so if they fall short of that, then certainly they're at the disadvantage over the other guy who just had to say.
Right.
I'm going to seek growth.
Right.
You know, so, so, you know, what is this? And what I was gathering, what I was gathering is that they weren't supposed to have to provide a specific target because then they could easily fall short if they set too lofty of a goal. So getting that consistent across the schools.
Yes, and, and we thought that that would be very easy to do after we took a look at some of the data that was provided and we could give better guidelines. You're, you're correct. We, and we do want consistency. We thought that at least this is consistency for our first time through and we will absolutely be looking at that data to see what kind of worked and what didn't and what specifications we can make to make it clearer. Thank you.
All right, sure, thank you.
Are the teachers trained at all in how to set one of these up or talked through it at all, like SMART goals or anything, you know? What's the acronym for SMART goals? Sorry, I pulled it up. Specific, Measurable, Agreed Upon, Realistic and Time-Based, you know, things like that? So that they know how to set something like this up? Because the rubric, you know, obviously everyone's going to want a highly effective, so they're going to look at that. But it's not particularly, it's kind of vague.
So what we did, we, we trained the assistant principals, we trained the principals, we have now team experts in every building, we've talked with them, we have eight examples that are completed from start to end on a variety of areas. They were taken actually from real deliberate practice plans and then we went forward and gave the goals and we showed them what type of evidence they could have. And they're listed, as teachers are developing the plan, they're listed in there. And then when requested, I've gone out and done trainings on how it might look and what kind of goals and what kind of data would be, would be relevant and that we're looking more at formative data rather than summative data and how you could address different areas with sample, samples of student writing, samples of projects. So we did talk about that when I was invited out to do that. I think, I think the examples we've heard have been very helpful too, so that they can see a variety of plans from start to end and how they've been set up.
Okay.
Chairman, the two that abstained, were they on the teacher's side or administrator's side?
They were on the teacher's side.
Okay, thank you.
The union's side, yes.
Now, this, this, this plan though, doesn't it, so, so the addition there was adding that there's got to be an evidence artifact from the initial.
No, there was always an evidence.
There was always there, so.
Yes.
So.
Just the number, that one out of how many they've put in needed to show evidence. So they could have brought in three, as long as one showed that they are moving toward the goal and it's had some positive impact, then it would be counted. Because we didn't want one administrator to ask for five samples, all five. So, so the evidence was always there, the team committee was, really determined the plan and that the evidence would be needed for highly effective and completing the plan for effective. This just was defining it a little bit more.
But this, this deliberate practice is brand, is bringing, this deliberate practice is new this year. So we haven't been through a cycle where teachers have completed it. This rubric was, a draft of it was, was distributed in the fall for training purposes and then the team committee went back and reviewed it at the meeting earlier in the month and you added the, the yellow highlighted section to it to better explain. But we have not actually gone through a full cycle with it because this is the first year this particular ideation of deliberate practices in place.
So you just said you wanted like formative versus summative, but that's not in this. That's my concern is like, without going through a full, is there like a one pager you could send out to all teachers on, I don't know, Peach Jar or something? So that they would know, like, this is, you know, roughly how to, how to do this? Because I don't think that it gets disseminated necessarily. I don't think the communication is, piece is there, from what I hear.
Yes, there are a variety of ways we get it down to the teacher level, but I do agree with you. It is difficult to get everything to the teacher level. Now, the, the examples would show them what formative data looks like. They are, as they're completing their plan, there are the links right there for them to take a look at because the best place really to put them would be as they're developing their plan.
It's online.
It's all online and there, as they're filling in, answering the questions, the examples are right there.
That's helpful, okay, thank you.
So, but in addition to that, and, and we do agree with you, getting it to the teacher level is one of our hardest pieces to ensure every teacher sees it. Team experts in every school, that's a big change this year. That's funded through the LIFT program and we have selected, principals have selected one person in each school that comes, now, we've already had one training where we went through in depth all of the things we're talking about here concerning deliberate practice as well as the procedures for the plan. about here concerning deliberate practice, as well as the procedures for the plan in other areas that aren't new. We met with them, and then they work with teachers back in their buildings, so that there is a support person that hears the same thing across all buildings. Every building is required to have a team expert. So, and we are actually meeting with them this week. We wanted to wait until we met with you, but on Wednesday, we're meeting with the team committee again, from all, team experts, for all the buildings. And we will be going step by step through this as well, so that they can help their teachers with the student performance side, as well as the rubric. And we will be actually presenting that rubric and presenting what examples look like. We also, this year, teachers seem to struggle with the Moodle site. It was a lot of steps to get there. So, we developed a team website, which is much easier. You just go into departments and select team. And it is very clear with all the updates, and it's by plan, so non-classroom have their area, classroom have their area, student services have their area. And then there is another thing, because LIFT has become so much a part of our culture, that there is a section explaining the LIFT plan, our career ladder. And we have, I sent out, I developed and sent out a newsletter just recently, that just in a nutshell kind of gives them all of the changes, the updates. And that was sent out to all the buildings. And we still have the Moodle site. For people that were able to make it there and it became part of their process, we keep the Moodle site updated as well. So, we are working hard to get it down to the teacher level. I will say, for the changes in ESE, where they now can submit their ESE, IEP goals, we actually made a list of every ESE title and teachers in it, so that we could send that directly to them. Because last year we heard it, the information didn't always make it to them. So, we're trying our best to get it down to every single teacher that has some sort of a change, and make sure they're aware of it. So, but that is a very good point. Thank you.
All right.
Can I?
Yes.
May I? I was wondering, and I don't know if this committee even meets anymore, but we had one of our representatives on the team committee that was on the VAM committee for the state of Florida. And remember all of that? Had they looked at that again with our Algebra I changes in our FSA, to say that the VAM that they're using for those tests is one that's actually valid? Had they reconvened that?
Well, they did. And they, there is only one, one area of VAM that they have deemed as mandatory to use, and that's ninth grade. Ninth grade Algebra I is the only consistent grade level that they can come out with VAM. So, it's optional, and we don't get, so we don't use VAM in those other grade levels. We do, and I think Mr. Zamora would go into that, but we only use VAM in ninth grade, because that's the grade it's required. Everything else, we take the scores, we attach them to the teachers, and we develop their calculations that way.
My second question, with kindergarten and first and second grade, with the iReady and the iStation data, I know you guys said that you decided it wasn't going to be necessarily helpful for our third through fifth grade, third through fifth grade teachers, because it would have brought their scores down, is what my assumption is.
It would, it was the highly effective-
That it would have pulled down.
That it would have pulled down. It would have pulled up the bottom, but it, we didn't want to make any significant changes that would, that could hurt teachers, especially this late in the year.
Sure.
So, that one, we could not, the models didn't show that it was going to help teachers.
The K1-2, we're using a growth component of those, of those, correct? And then my, I guess my last question with those, with the K1-2 component, I've had a couple of teachers, I will tell you guys, I've been kind of quiet, because I've been listening, because I think my fear with all of the discussion that's happening, is at what point do we, and again, this is all for the teacher evaluation purposes, but it was set in place, and I honestly believe, and the people that have asked me this, I will say that it's the principal's job, that it's their job at the school, they know the teachers, they need to be giving those evaluation ratings. And the state has had to come in, in lieu of that, because there was some, we should be asking our questions when we get our student performance measures back. Why is this person, their VAM score so low? And even if it's an invalid test, they've all taken the same invalid test. And so, I need to look at what my data looks like compared to yours, if you're my next-door neighbor, or yours, if you're the school across the way. So, I don't, my concern is that we're making this to the point that we're trying to support teachers in such a way that we are negating what great teachers are doing. And it's not okay to be, for us to have an evaluation model that would include 80, how much, 95% of our teachers are effective or highly effective, which is what we've purposefully done, because we realize this legislation is required. But at the same time, I feel like some of our other teachers that are high-performing teachers are seeing some mitigated responses to the evaluation system that we're setting up. And that bothers me to a certain degree. And I appreciate what you said about the additional scale, where they're performing at a 99%, and so we do need to look at those things. But with the K1-2, one of the other concerns that I heard is that they can take it multiple times. And so, I've heard that there are teachers that are putting their kids on for their end-of-the-year growth score, and if they don't score high enough, they're putting them back on it and back on it again. And so, that's one of my other concerns, is that now we have a system in place, and it would be the same thing, the use of the finals, and all of these things that are impacting our teachers' professionalism in regards to, this is going to impact my teaching certificate. So, I didn't know if we were looking, if there was a date, like, once you take the test, this is the date that's going to count, we're not going to continue to put kids on because you're trying to increase your evaluation rating, as important as it is for us to do that.
I would ask Mr. Zamora to answer that, because I think he can really, I know that there are dates on the test, on the testing calendar.
Okay.
And we stick to those dates, but I would ask him to answer that question.
Stephanie, do you mean K through two?
Yeah, the K through two is-
And you mean specific iStation or iReady?
At this point in the game, but I mean, even all of our, the deliberate practice component, and then we look at our student performance measures, and all the varying ways that we're calculating this. And honestly, one of the other concerns I had that I wasn't going to raise today was, we had said before that we kept the VAM at 50% across years, because it was actually helpful to teachers to do that. So, now that we've decreased it to 35%, are we, is that going to be helpful for teachers to do that as well? Which I assume it was, if the whole committee voted on it. But that was kind of like, I remember hearing that in the background, that that 50% is actually helpful to teachers, and now we've decreased it to 35%.
That was when we got the VAM scores, and then we applied our Lake County model to it. Now, we get this, the rating from the state, and we have to use that rating.
Got it, got it.
On the kindergarten and through second grade, what we do, the curriculum department sets growth points for every grade, what the student needs to grow, or what they consider annual growth for a year. So, what we do, or what I do with the data, is I look at the first data point, and I don't necessarily look at the last data point, I look at the testing window. They have set three testing dates, so I look at the first testing date window, and the last testing date window, and I look at that last data point. So, if they continue testing, some of those scores dropped, because they're past the testing window. I look for anomalies. If I see a student with multiple scores within the testing window, and they're a day apart to this, I'm looking, checking off data for that. So, hopefully that answers the question.
Teachers are absolutely putting kids on iReady and iStation as part of their curriculum now. I mean, that's, that's just a given. In some schools, it's, I mean, but it's part of the blueprints.
You're right. I think the way it's being used, it's not just the diagnostic portion, it is, the kids are getting instruction from these.
Right, with the hope that it increases, but there are teachers that, in other schools, that don't use it. And I think it would be really helpful, I don't know your position.
I'm the data analyst, the one that does the calculation.
So, you'd be a great person to compare, sorry, he said, for the people, he said he was a data analyst. You'd be a great person to compare the teachers that do use iStation or iReady to those who do not, so that we had a control group, and actually show whether or not istation and iReady throughout the year increases their-
Well, actually, you'd be fascinated to find how many studies like that currently exist. And I've had a chance to peruse many of them through my master's studies, and I found consistently, and this is actually a conversation I had with one of the ladies from iReady at FSBA, and I said, well, here's my biggest beef, is that there are no studies that are done by somebody independent, that shows that students gaining their instruction from this program as opposed from the teacher, have any sort of extra gain. And she said, you're right, which actually validates every study out there, that nobody's able to independently produce that simple usage generates higher gains.
Right, that, which was my understanding. So, we all showed that, wow, with iStation, we increased gains, but those gains could be easily increased by that teacher, teaching.
Right.
So, since we have teachers doing it and teachers not doing it, we could compare before we pay for another program.
Both systems have usage reports per school, per student, to the teacher level. So, yes, we can look at that data, and I can talk to curriculum department and work with them in making sure we identify that data for you.
Do we want to do that?
We can pull the data, and we'll need to see what it entails, and we can certainly look at that.
And I guess, you know, if I could echo your concerns about, I also get this feeling that we're pulling teachers to the middle, that we probably have more than, is it 1% in the needs improvement realm? Is that right? Two or three, or?
It was about 100.
Five? So, you know, looking for, you know, making sure people have a fair shot at whatever, you know, the highly effective, teachers get a fair shot at getting highly effective, but similarly, not just inflating the bottom to inflate them. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Marshall will remain for the next topic.
All right, which is allocations.
Thank you.
Okay, the allocation committee met, has had a couple of meetings, starting in November, met again a couple of weeks ago, and you can see here who sits on that committee. Mr. Dodd is your board rep on the allocation committee. One of the things the committee does each year is take a look at some of the priorities, and what are the needs of schools. Again, the school allocation plan is how we staff schools, not the districts. This is the staffing plan for schools. Some of the things that were identified by the committee was need for an additional math teacher at middle schools to, particularly to look at, to give students more intense support, those who are below, below the level three on the FSA. The high schools expressed a concern and a need for additional guidance counselor with the, all the work that's being done on the graduation rate, and the tracking individual students, and meeting with individual students throughout the year. At the middle school level, they're struggling to get the testing, all the testing done, that would be the FSA, all the required things on the district testing calendar, as well as supporting students who have Section 504 plans. So, their request is an additional position to take some of that load off of the current guidance department. Southlake High School, East Ridge High, and Lake Mineola put in a request to have an additional teacher due to some needs that are coming up with the Health Science Collegiate Academy. Elementary schools have said that they would like to have more assistance in the area of intensive reading. The high, the other levels have intensive reading teachers. Elementary would like to have an intensive reading teacher to push in, particularly at third grade, to be of additional support in classrooms for students who are struggling. There was a suggestion that we take a look at the allocation of elementary enrichment teachers, which would be PE, music, art, et cetera. Across all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, the suggestion that we look at ways to increase ESE support facilitation surfaced, that these are our teachers who are going into regular classrooms and supporting ESE teachers, I mean, ESE students, so they are successful in the regular classroom. Currently, our ratio is one teacher per 25 students. That was increased two or three years ago, and there is some concern that that might be too many students for a teacher to successfully handle. Similarly, there was a need expressed for additional teacher assistance for self-contained ESE classes. Now, your current formula does provide a mechanism for a second teacher assistant to be earned. The principals are particularly concerned about students in emotional behavior disorder classes, EBD. Those students may not always qualify for additional funding to earn another assistant, but their behaviors and some of their needs are pretty extensive, and additional help in the classroom is the request. Also, Rhymes Early Learning Center has a very lean staff, and leadership staff, you know, non-classroom-based professionals, and there is a request to look at the possibility of a potential specialist at Rhymes. So, that brings us to, what do we do? There are some, I did meet with Dr. Motzley and Mrs. Carnegie, and we went through all of this in depth, and there are some considerations. Certainly, the funding and budget for next year are not established. We had the DMC study that's looking at ESE and struggling, ESE students who are included in the struggling students category. Preliminary data, Ms. McLeod indicates, hopefully will be coming to us in March, that may help us make some decisions on some of the areas that I just mentioned to you. You are just embarking on a process to look at your strategic priorities for this next year, so that's why the committee wanted you to be aware of what their thinking is on these areas. And also, we have a school board policy that says you need to adopt this allocation plan by March 1st. So, the suggestion is that at this time, we address the elementary enrichment concern, or the follow-up on that suggestion. That is on page two, if anyone's looking at their allocation plan, but here it is. Current, you can see on the left, the current formula for earning enrichment teachers based on enrollment in the school. The proposed is on the right. It does a couple of things. It is providing an additional enrichment teacher allocation for every 175 students. Currently, you may notice that in some cases, there's 150 increment, and there are other places, there's a 200 increment. This puts it to a 175 increment to earn the additional teacher. It also is accommodating, we have, in particular, Sawgrass Bay growing larger, so we needed to expand the formula to provide for that school, should they gain more students.
Did I see that this doesn't actually generate any fiscal impact, because schools are already receiving the amount? Because you all have been providing, if you're close, you've been giving them anyway.
Right, we have been. And what this also does, it does, they're going, the schools under this proposal will earn an additional teacher a little sooner, so that's going to take care of, we have had schools getting close, and they're really have desperately full, particularly PE classes, music classes, so this will give them some relief a little sooner, and-
I think there's like three schools.
Right. So, there are, there are a couple of schools that were very close to earning another teacher based on current enrollment, because of safety concerns, the decision was made to go ahead and give them a teacher. Right now-
How do we define enrichment? I didn't look at the-
Non-core. Non-core, but typically, it's the special classes that student, elementary students go to while the teacher is in, has their planning period.
But do we have personnel? Do we have descriptions, a specific, like, is it art?
It's a site-based decision. Currently, we have, of course, art, music, PE. Some schools have a computer ed class, some schools are doing an extra science enrich, you know, in science enrichment, maybe focusing on STEM or some science areas.
Media is its own separate allocation.
Media, right. So, media center is in almost, I think in all schools, is part of the enrichment wheel, but it's not called out here, because that's a separate allocation for each school. So, those are the-
Is guidance one?
No, guidance counselors are not seeing students for enrichment purposes. Guidance, elementary guidance-
Guidance is often on the wheel.
In some cases, the guidance counselor is going in, and is doing some guidance activities, but to my knowledge, there's not a guidance counselor that all day, every day, is doing enrichment as part of the schedule. But yes, they are included as a push-in into enrichment in some cases. I don't know of the school that has their guidance counselor 100% doing-
There are some schools that do what they call classroom guidance, but it's under the role of the guidance counselor. It is not considered an enrichment, per se, that is providing planning.
I just wanted to know what we were calling enrichment.
So, enrichment right now is usually music, PE, sometimes it's art, if it's a larger school, it has an extra allocation. It could be, in some cases, it's computers, and in some cases, it's a science. And it, it's a site-based decision, and it also depends on how many enrichment teachers you, a school earns. So, this is the proposal, is to amend the enrichment allocation plan. So, the recommendation from Dr. Motzley and Mrs. Carnegie is that we go ahead and approve the current allocation plan with the addition of the enrichment change, and then revisit the list of priorities that schools- and then revisit the list of priorities that schools and the committee have given you later this spring, after you know more about the budget, after we have the DMC data, and after you all have had a chance to discuss your board priorities. By going ahead and approving this at the February 13th board meeting, it's going to help a lot with schools being able to go ahead and get their allocation centered so they can be doing their master planning, and we can, you know, we need to accelerate our timeline frame for reappointing teachers. So that will help us accomplish those goals.
Do we have a job description for these enrichment teachers? I haven't looked.
I would have to look, I can't
It's probably just the
It's probably just, it probably just falls under the teacher, but I don't, I don't want to say that without looking.
I think we should have a job description. Because otherwise, they can use her anything, and then we're just providing potentially administration.
No, 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 these are classroom teachers, they're basic allocations and
Because they would have the classroom teacher job description as their job.
They are classroom teachers.
These are load-bearing positions, they have students assigned to them, and they are in the rotation. That's how your classroom teachers at the elementary level get their planning relief. So if I'm a kindergarten teacher and my planning period comes, I'm, my students are going out to PE or to art or to music or that combination, and that's how I'm getting my planning. So the teachers that are enrichment teachers, they have class loads, they have student rosters, they're, you know,
There's FTE, they're on FTE reports as well.
And that's why there's not been a separate job description, because it's the content that changes, but they're doing the job of a classroom teacher.
And Mr. Dodd, you're correct, in terms of fiscal impact, right now, with, there would not be additional fiscal impact to adopt the plan with the revised enrichment, but there are three schools that are very close to the new threshold. So with a little growth, there are three schools that may gain, that would gain a teacher.
And so, board members, why we brought this today is, one, we wanted to give you an update. This committee has met, you do, for transparency, we wanted to give you the list of the needs and the recommendations. However, at this point in time, because we started school so early this year, we end earlier, way earlier, that pushes back all the timelines for our schools to staff and do all the reappointments. So it is critical that we move forward. So we just wanted to bring you the base skeleton plan, if you will, to staff schools with all the necessities. You got to have a principal, you got to have teachers in the classroom, those kinds of things. We wanted to keep that, the base plan moving forward, and not, at this point in time, not have, I'm not making any recommendations to change anything, because you are early in the stages of all those things Mrs. Marshall mentioned, and so this gives you the flexibility to add on as you need or as you determine how you want to impact the classroom and the schools in the future. And you can always come back and revise this, but what you don't want to do is to leave this hanging out there for weeks on end, because then they can't start staffing and reappointing in the timeframe as outlined by contract.
And I, you know, I can speak from the last couple of years of experience. I can certainly appreciate the approach this year in terms of giving us a skeletal plan. In the last few years, you know, there'd be all sorts of increases, and they would sound great at the time, you know, and we'd say, well, yeah, they're all necessary, so we'd approve them. And then when we got to the next step, oh, you don't have any money left, but wait, this other thing is more important. I'd rather do this. If I knew the two were going to be competing, I wouldn't have voted for the other thing before. So now, you know, this, I think, gives us more of the picture at the same time, which I think is fantastic. I guess the one area, and I'm not sure how is determined, and that's the ratio of number of teachers for non-core classes. I know that this one's got a ratio for core classes, because of course, that's got to comply with class size. But let's say AP courses, and you know, this is a relevant topic based on this, and I know that, Dr. Motzley, you had a chance to pull data and found that some of our AP courses, not a lot of them, but some of them had 40 kids, and others were in the 30 range.
That's ridiculous.
And so, so how does, how does this address, you know, how many kids a principal might assign to a PE course or an AP course or, you know, anything else? How do we decide how many teachers to give them?
We have a budgetary staffing model that we've used and shown to where we take each school and divide it by core and non-core, and assign the core based on class size, and the non-core is usually five more. Because we do need that wiggle room for the extra classes, but we don't want classes of 40. That's a staffing to get specific teachers. Then once you get to the school level, it becomes, well, I need four sections of this and two sections of this. Those two sections could be heavily loaded because they don't have enough to make three. That becomes a master planning issue with the principals. But from a staffing point, it really is, it's a formula. It's a formula we use, again, like at high school, we go with, it's a seven-period day. They have four core and three non-core. At a middle school, it's four and two, because they have a six-period day. Elementary's a little weirder because of, they're not on a period day like the middle schools, they don't switch classes. But it's still formula-driven. But then it comes down to, they've got the allocations, what do they do with them? I think, I think Mrs. McLeod is right on the master scheduling piece of it, and that, you know, it sounds easy, but it is not. You know, you take, you know, 100 students, well, at 25, that's four periods, four classrooms, you know. It isn't, because a lot of, and when you, Mr. Dodd is correct, we're doing a real deep look at the AP, and most of our high schools, very rarely, you know, they would have ranges from, you know, 20, 21, 22 to up to 32, and we did have one school that had a larger number that did have some classes that went all the way up to 40, and 41, I think, was the highest one in that one school. And so one of the things that we have to do is, we're going back and looking with, at that one school, and we're saying, okay, why is that? A lot of times, when I saw that there were 32, it was either there was one section of it, and they tried to accommodate all students, or typically, sometimes what I would see is there would be a class of 32, and then the next class had 22. Well, you would say, well, gee, can't you just add them together and divide by two and have even numbers? Well, master scheduling doesn't work that way, because you don't know that child's schedule and the competing sections of some of the other classes, what they need. And they try, and if a student's taking all AP classes, sometimes it's very difficult, especially if there's only one section of this one and one section of this one. So, you know, you have some of those competing things that it doesn't make it just divide by two kind of thing. But this one particular school had a lot of things that caught my attention. It also goes back to what we talked about earlier, is that maybe there are some situations where we have some students in there that probably, if they're not really foundationally ready to take it, maybe there needs to be some other decisions that are made here. And I realize, you know, I'm all for stretching a student, and they're better for it for being in the class, even if they don't pass the AP exam, but that has effects on data, and it has effects on VAM and all those other things. And so I think we're going to have to have some discussions about that scheduling item.
Is that being, I mean, that's a quality control issue. Is that being, I mean, you're looking at it, but is that being, like, dealt with next year?
Well, that, they're just getting ready to start their master schedules right now, so they're just in the preliminary stages of that, so that's why the discussions are paramount right now. And in this particular one school, I don't want to call out one school, but in that particular, those conversations are taking place now.
Because I can't, you know, I, like, I just think that's, that's
So I think, I think the issue has now been raised, and so you and Mrs. Carnegie are looking at it and ensuring that going forward next year, there's some guidelines for
I mean, we had a situation, I'm sorry, Mr. Kim, we had a situation last year with, because of the Health Science Collegiate Academy, and I know Ms. Llewellyn's right here in the audience, that we were, we dealt with Spanish, and because, when we looked at that, and there were some, Spanish one was being offered at the middle school, and that kind of set a whole different dynamic in, and we had to go back in, and we did. We added a Spanish teacher to accommodate, so we didn't have those large numbers. So you have to look at it and work on it as they're working on the schedules. I'm sorry.
Question I have would be, are low-performance schools, what allowances are we making for providing extra allocations to them to bring them up?
Those schools, this allocation plan is, is the positions that come from the Fund 100, your basic budget. The needs of those schools and others are also supported by the SAI Supplementer Academic Incentive Plan, by Title I, by reading dollars. So there are other, you know, IDEA, the federal, for ESE students for those schools. So those schools do receive additional resources through other funding sources.
So this is the baseline for every school. I mean, this is what you're saying, this is the basic level across all schools, and then there's things that come above and beyond.
Because I know some schools in my district, especially one, has received some extra assistance. And because of that, their data has been able to been increased as far as their student achievement. But some of the concerns that one school told me, once they got to that level, then those individuals will pull it out, and then the next year, they've got other students coming in, they're going back into that same problem, because, you know, you got the schools that moved out of fifth grade to the next level, or you got other kids coming in from other areas, they still need that assistance there, and when we get them up, we just pull out their help and
Typically, everything isn't pulled back in one year. There's a gradual phase down, and also looking at, actually, in, with the case of our, schools that had grades of DNF a couple of years ago, we left everything in place for several years, and then did a gradual reduction, because you've got to reallocate the resources to where the needs are, so, but I don't think of a situation where we just pulled the rug out and said, you went from having everything to nothing in one year. It's a balancing act with limited resources.
Yeah, the example that you're talking about, too, that that school was Title I and then was not Title I. And so sometimes, when you're Title I, there's automatic things out of Title I that when, if the next year, if your poverty, free and reduced lunch drops, and you don't qualify for Title I, then yes, there are some things, but in the cases of Title I's in the schools in the most recent years, we did not take everything back, we did a gradual adjustment. So actually, we paid for some positions to remain because they were doing, and they still had struggling students, so that they didn't feel that impact, but that comes directly out of your general 100. It's kind of like grants that go away, and then you continue to fund the position.
But I would think that would be money well spent if we took it out of the Fund 100 to put it into those low-performance schools.
It gets to a point, like Mr. Dodd said, of choices.
Right.
And that, the list of, I think it was nine requests, needs, many of those are related to, you know, reading the math, that, the issues that we're just talking about, that schools need.
In this allocation that we're talking about here, this is all the allocations from food service all the way up, right?
Every position that's at a school, assigned to a school. So yes, includes custodians, food service, they are included in the allocation formula plan that you have before you.
So we could bring this back up at another time and readjust?
Yeah, and this is, this is just a, you know, a workshop on it, that we'll come to a vote on it. And I guess, depending on what sort of conversation we have when developing our strategic finance plan priorities, you know, there could be some items that are addressed through that, but then there could be some conversation that would then go back and affect this, but a lot of those things we tend to do. That's another way of getting what we want. You know, for instance, the academic tutors at kindergarten and first grade, all the elementary schools have them, but they're not in this plan, because they're paid for through the other vehicle.
And that, that's why you want to look at this, this is the base, this is the base foundation. And we, our intention is to bring it at the February 13 meeting, so that we can get schools staffed. That doesn't mean you can't come back, if you want to make an adjustment to food service, that, you know, and that is out of a different budget, then you can bring, you know, you can always come back and revisit and add and tweak. What makes it harder, like Mr. Dodd brought up, is if you've hired people. So that's why we brought the basic plan, because I, this is what you basically need to open up your doors.
Well, see, also, one of the concerns I had at some of the high schools is that we have four grades, but we only have three guidance counselors, so therefore, some of them, in the average throughout the state, is a whole lot less than what we put on our guidance counselors, and then we're putting on to the assistant principals at some schools. They're having to help the guidance counselors by keeping up with these students' grades to make sure that they keep on top of things, because the guidance counselors overwork. So, I mean, to me, I think we need to look at as our priorities, but I think we need to look at also, and I saw it's in there, that they want to add one guidance counselor, but in some cases, you may need more than that, because the amount of students you have at that, at that school. You take Lake Minneola High, East Ridge High, South Lake High, maybe Leesburg High, they have an enormous amount of students there at the grade level, they may need more than what they have there, but I don't want us to, someone fall through the cracks because we didn't have enough staff there, but we thought this project over here was more important. I think we need to look at what's going to be most effective at our schools for our students.
We have a lot of data on that, that we can certainly, you know, pull for you to look at.
Okay, I'm a little confused by the whole, the committee identified priorities, because we, we went through the committee identified priorities. Are they, are they just to inform us? Because we didn't, we didn't, the thing at the end is just allocation.
That's my recommendation, moving forward for this plan.
But it doesn't hit any of the committee identified.
No, because those are identifications from the committee, they're all, you know, they're school representatives. They look at it, and they all come forth and put all their wish lists, their wants, all of that. You can't afford everything on that list, I will tell you that.
Right.
Plain and simple, you want to, but you can't afford
But let's say we could afford one of them, like, when does that happen?
That will happen once you, you now have them, we've brought them to you. You will work on your strategic finance plan, you'll work on your board priorities, you may want to incorporate in your board priorities, and then you will make decisions, because it's going to be a trade-off. You're going to decide, I don't want to fund this anymore, I want to fund this. I want to keep funding this, and therefore, these will have to wait for another year. Or you may say, okay, we feel very comfortable moving forward with these three items, but until we get the legislative session over with, and we want to come back in June, and through the budgeting process, we'll pick some of those things up.
Is there any data on the ARTs, the, all the other coaches, the, help me out with all the letters? There's a whole bunch of letters.
There's an FST, Florida Standards Teacher, there's an Accelerated Resource Teacher, all of that, those are
And all the, all the literacy coaches, you know, math coach, science coach?
Literacy coaches is in this allocation for you. Just about every position that you named, otherwise.
Literacy coaches should be, I think they are in here.
In your elementary table. But just about all those other positions you named are funded through the strategic finance plan, so I think that's, that's going to be
They're not in here.
A look at page three. Isn't it on there?
No, it's not on here.
There's literacy coaches, oh, it's in there somewhere.
There's a CRT?
Oh, you know what, CRT's in here, I think literacy coach comes through the reading dollars out of the state. CRT is on page two of nine. And you're right, sorry, literacy coaches are out of the reading dollars, so And literacy coaches are paid for out of the reading incentive dollars. So that's, that comes as a, that comes in the budgetary cycle. So literacy coaches are not in here, CRTs are.
Okay.
That's a curriculum resource teacher at the elementary. And so we get a separate categorical from the state on reading dollars, and that comes through the budgeting cycle.
And so when are all of these people evaluated? All of these positions, when are they evaluated?
Evaluated meaning for their job performance or
No, as a, as a whole.
To determine whether or not the position was well invested, or
Yes.
Worth the investment.
Those all will come up for you during your budgeting cycle, literacy coaches, when those budgets come up. We have data on the ARTs and the FSTs as part of your strategic finance plan.
Why are they not part of the strategic finance plan?
They are.
Literacy coaches are not, they're out of the reading dollars, out of the state initiative. Literacy coaches have been around a long time, and those have been provided through the state's reading dollars, and that's a state categorical, and that came, oh, what, 10, 12, 14 years ago, where that was an initiative, you know, from the state level, and they gave us all reading dollars, and you, most districts used, put literacy coaches in, you didn't have to, but most, most districts did, and so we use our reading dollars for that.
Are we sure that's the best use of our dollars?
That's a, that's a philosophical question, that if you ask one person, you're going to get one philosophical answer. If you ask another person, you might get another answer, and I think it varies from school district to school district. It may vary school to school, and I think it varies across the country with that. I've seen them used very effectively and should not be eliminated. And I've been in situations in my career where I did not feel that You got the return on investment, and I'm not saying that was here in Lake County, or not, yes or no on that, but I'm just saying, over the course of my career, I've seen situations. There are research studies that have come back saying that, you know, it really gets down to the fidelity of the implementation of it.
So I still don't understand why, A, we don't look at them during the strategic finance plan with all the other people.
You can, if you'd like to, knowing that in this district, reading dollars have paid for those, and you won't know what your reading dollars are until about April.
Okay.
Or May.
I mean, to me, it would make sense to look at all of those extra people at the same time.
You can.
I don't want to call them extra people, but potential positions that could be push-ins into the classroom and aren't necessarily being used in that way, or are being used as administration, but might be better used as classroom teachers, or maybe they need to stay as exactly what they are. Or could that literacy person be a CRT? You know?
Well, the person sitting in the literacy position may qualify to be a CRT.
And we're funding a CRT.
But their jobs are different.
You know, so that might be a switch out. So maybe we, like, that's why I don't understand why we don't look at all of these positions all at the same time.
You, you can.
I would like, I would like that.
It's been when the monies have come in, but you certainly, when you look at your strategic finance plan, you can look at all the positions that are out in schools that are above and beyond this document. You can certainly do that. That's not a problem. That's whatever your pleasure is in moving forward.
Certainly, and I think based on some of the discussions from a couple of years on the board, I'm sure that is, is long overdue to talk about coaches. I know, Stephanie, you've brought up a number of times about how they're used and whether or not they're effective.
Right, and that may just be a matter of making sure that they are. I've heard they're very effective at some schools and very ineffective in other schools.
And that's what makes them hard to evaluate, to be honest, to do that evaluation. Because you, we can, like for the ARTs and the FSTs, we've done time and task where we look at what are they doing? How are they being used? That kind of thing where you can go back and link what's their touch with students and based on student outcomes. A literacy coach, again, if it's been left to school, site-based management, I may use that literacy coach to go in and model lessons with teachers and they're working in the classroom all the time. Others are used to do professional development. Others are used to pull small groups of students. Well, the touch, direct touch with students is different in all three examples. And depending on your philosophy on that, that's what makes it very hard, other than, you know, if you pull, what is it, what are their jobs? Do that task analysis. But you're doing one and you may be, if we have, you know, picking 50 literacy coaches, you could literally have 50 different jobs.
Then maybe we need to look at job descriptions. Okay.
One more question. Last year, we had increased the availability for high school athletic directors from having no periods a day free to two periods a day free. Have we found, looking at that, whether or not they need those two full periods or is one enough? I mean, because we really didn't go in between. We went from zero to two, you know? So I don't know the answer, so I guess I'm just interested in whether or not.
I think that would, I will ask our athletic director to get, get some information on that for you. I personally don't, don't have that information.
Okay, sure. I didn't think that you might off the top of your head, but...
I know in speaking to a couple, they would like to, at least one, be all day because of...
Of course.
Well, the problem is sometimes they run into complications that they have to leave their classroom to go and take care of because there's been a cancellation of game because of inclement weather and things. So they got to make all these contacts. So, and it's done at a time that gives them plenty of time to contact their, you know, referees or umpires, whichever it may be. And so if they are in the classroom, somebody's got to cover. But if there's nobody available, it creates a problem. So they were asking that if, you know, just one a day, you know, just one of them.
And it's, it's financial trade-offs and you're going to have this discussion, I know you will, because we, we have it every year. And certainly, we would, that, that would be certainly a desirable thing for the very reasons you bring up. But again, we did cost, we did a cost analysis of that, what, a year ago? Mr. Dodd, I think it was, for that. I know, I think we're done with this particular topic, but before we go, I really want to thank Mrs. Marshall. This will be the last time she will be appearing before you, before she moves into retirement. But I really want to thank her for her leadership and we appreciate everything she's done. So thank you, Mrs. Marshall.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
And I was going to correct you earlier in your other presentation when you said that you would be collecting this data. I don't think you will be.
That was the, that was the we in the department. Right, thank you.
Yeah, we.
Very nice of you to sign up for the volunteer paperwork.
Do you, do you want to brag?
Board members, how are you feeling? Do you want to take a restroom break? I know we've got a lot of topics left on our agenda, but if people need to go, they need to go. Yes, I heard, I saw a nod, at least one nod. All right, let's take a five-minute recess.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Halbig.
Sandy, oh, sorry. There you are. I was just calling you. I didn't, I didn't know where you were. All right, thank you very much, folks, for the opportunity to take a quick recess. We are coming back now. It's 11:56. And our first item coming back is an overview and update of personalized learning. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Mr. Dodd, school board members, and Dr. Moxley as well. It is a pleasure to be with you all this morning. As some of you may know, my first introduction to personalized learning was as the principal at Wendy Hill Middle School. And when we started planning for what that would look like in our school, it was very exciting to see the passion and excitement that the teachers had and the engagement that the students had as well as we went down this pathway. And I knew at that point, we had something and we needed to look at what we were going to do to make it available to more students in Lake County. So in this chair now, it's exciting to be able to see that across several schools. And Mrs. Luke, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, to come up here and to be able to give you an update of where we are in the future of it and next steps for us in Lake County. So at this time, I want to turn it over to Kathy Halbig, our coordinator for personalized learning.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you all. Again, Mrs. Luke, thank you for bringing up the questions that you did. I'm excited to share with you a little bit about what's going on with personalized learning, but mostly here to answer those specific questions that you brought up. But since we have a couple of new board members who haven't had any exposure perhaps to presentation on personalized learning, I'll go over just briefly a little bit about what that is. So I do have a lot of materials that I provided to you in a binder. I won't ask you to look in there right now. And the reason is because the work is, is really very deep in a lot of different areas. So the three particular topics you brought up, CEPR, competency-based, and micro credentialing, we could probably do a 30-minute workshop on any one of those. And those are not the only three pieces to personalized learning. So I'll give you a lot of information, I hope, today with a lot more in your binder that you could reflect on or look through. And all of this will also be online. And then anytime that you need us to come back, we would be more than happy to do that. Okay?
And I would, and I would probably anticipate that this will be a hot topic for us. Certainly, there's a amount, a significant amount of money dedicated to personalized learning and the strategic finance plan. So, so I think board members will just kind of treat this as an introduction or a catch-up. And I think there'll be plenty of opportunities coming up to, for extended dialogue on it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, so first of all, what is it? So when we think about personalized learning, our definition here is a working definition and it really is just adjusting the pace and approach of instruction based on the individual needs, skills, and interests of students. And so rather than trying to talk through that in words, I'm going to show you a quick video that is less than two minutes. And so this will hopefully give it, make it clear for you. Where's the volume? Sorry.
That doesn't work. Can we throw the closed captioning on? Is it captioned? Because I, because I see the CC or, or, yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, while he is working on that, if you will open up your binder, I will share with you what's in the binder. So the first section is about the PL background. And so we, I didn't, this is intended to get an in this section for you, and I didn't get that in, so I'll tell you what's in here. The first item in here is the executive summary for personalized learning. So we created an executive summary and a strategic plan back in 2013. That was actually what we presented in Houston when we went to apply for the grant. And so our executive summary is the first item in the background. And we'll put the full... Thank you, Gemma.
What do you picture when you hear the word "school"? Is it this? Each day, teachers work to instruct classrooms filled with students, each with their own interests, academic level, and way they learn. Imagine trying to teach a class of 30 students how to add fractions. By the end of the lesson, half the class might get it, half might not. So what should happen the next day? The teacher can reteach the lesson, leaving those who got it bored, restless, or disruptive. Or the teacher can teach a new lesson, letting the kids who didn't get it fall further and further behind until they are discouraged or frustrated. We need alternative methods. We need to give students a more individualized curriculum and ensure that students get what they need, when they need it, how they need it. If we're serious about trying to meet the needs of every child, we need to view traditional teacher-led class instruction as just one way kids learn. There are other options. Students can also learn in small groups from each other, or with videos, games, or practice problems on their laptop, or with online instructors, or even by themselves with books, activities, or software. These are just a few ways students can receive instruction. We call them modalities. By joining different modalities into one learning environment where students, teachers, and resources from multiple classrooms can be combined into one open space, we move from a model that looks like this to a model that looks more like this, where students get instruction at their own academic level in the format most likely to be successful for them. For example, this teacher is helping a group with triangles while this student is working on algebra with his online tutor. This is just one model New Classrooms is developing to reimagine the classroom to meet the needs of every student.
Okay, so New Classrooms put together that video. We've used it since 2013. We don't have anything to do with New Classrooms. I don't even know what their product is. But that video does in a nutshell, I think, what, explains in a nutshell what personalized learning really is. And it's essentially meeting each student where he or she is and giving them the right instruction to move them forward for success. So when we think about why PL is important, we think about a couple of different things. Number one is student performance. That's the reason that we approached this work in the beginning. We saw that even in our successful schools, that we have sometimes as many as 25 to 30% of students who aren't meeting proficiency. And so while some students are successful in our current traditional system, quite a few are not. And so with personalized learning strategies where we try to meet the needs of each individual students, we, student, we do intend to impact student performance in a positive way. Secondly, PL is important because of student engagement. Some of the research today says that in high school, it's only four out of 10 students who are engaged in their learning. And so this gradually becomes more and more of a problem over time. And when students aren't engaged, then we know that we're not getting their full attention to the content. And so it's not surprising if we don't get full and strong student performance as a result of that. Perseverance. With the new Florida standards, we've heard a great deal from teachers about how students, even their high-performing students, want to quit when the learning gets tough. That often they're focused more on getting the right answer rather than the learning itself. And it's a little bit, they don't like that risk of not knowing the exact right answer. So the perseverance that is approached in personalized learning through growth mindset is one of the things that we hope to impact positively as well. And then finally, student success. What we're looking for are students who are successful in their classrooms, who are successful through our K-12 environment, who graduate with strong opportunities for career and college of their choice. So one of the quotes that I have up here for you is from Students at the Center, which is a publication that is a joint publication from Jobs for the Future and the Nellie May Foundation. What they're really talking about here is the importance of student engagement, one of the, the pieces of personalized learning that we have seen a lot of positive outcomes with. So the more educators give students choice, control, challenge, and collaborative opportunities, the more motivation and engagement are likely to rise. And I love this quote. This is actually from one of our APs here in Lake County schools. Personalized learning is like a tailored suit. It's custom, it's designed to custom-fit the learning needs, skills, and interests of each individual student. And that really is what we're after. So where are we at this point? So this is a very high-level view of where we started. There's a lot in between each one of those bubbles. But it started really in 2012, 13, when the board at the time established personalized learning for teachers, leaders, and students as an instructional priority. We began that work. I was actually the lead on that team. And we brought one group together who focused on personalized learning for teachers, leaders, and students. We ended up splitting it up. And we envisioned, Ms. Cockroft was there with a lot of district leaders. We had directors, principals, APs, teachers, curriculum specialists, all combined, kind of think through what our vision for personalized learning would be. And we were well on our way to that work when a grant became available from the Bill Melinda Gates Foundation. It was offered to the 125 largest districts in the nation, and we at the time fit in that category. And we applied for and did receive that grant, which was to develop a strategic plan for what personalized learning might look like and how we would implement it and scale it up. Later, in early 2014, after presenting in Houston, Dr. Moxley, Dr. Doyle, Dr. Wheeler, Liz Hobart, and I went to Houston and presented, and we were awarded Phase Two, which then led into Phase Three of the grant. It's only been this past, not this past August, but only the year prior that we've really had schools implementing PL. So our longest implementation is one and a half years. So in 2015, 16, our original five schools began. And that followed a six-month application process where they did a lot of investigating of how that would work in their schools. And then they did a presentation and decided on how they would move forward. And then this year, really the second year, we're not even through the second year yet of implementation, eight additional schools have come on board, so we now have a total of 13 schools. One of the things I wanted to share with you is, I don't know if I can do it with this, is our, no, our personalized learning website.
While, while Mrs. Halbig's doing that, board, I want to link something that Mrs. Halbig just said to you about the, there were five original schools that are, this year, they're in their second year. So they really only have had one full year. You had asked at the board table about why with CEPR, why was it Wendy Hill and why was it Lost Lake? Why they were selected. And in doing, further going back and asking those questions, the explanation I received is because those two schools were the ones that had the longest implementation. I mean, you can't go in and review until you've had some amount of time for implementation. And they have probably the, the greatest depth of implementation to actually go back and review to look at best practices. Some of our other schools, like we have Yematilla High School, they, while they're doing PL, there are, there are just a handful of people doing it. It's not as school-wide quite as Wendy Hill. It's not as advanced as Wendy Hill is. Pardon me? And South Lake, South Lake, they started out and they did, and they have a handful of teachers too. There, there's been some pulling back for quality control at that particular school. So, and then we had one other school, and that's Sawgrass Bay. And Sawgrass Bay, they've done a lot with culture and different things. So if we were to do a third school, it would be Sawgrass Bay that would have enough of substance to do that. I think it's also important, and one of the things we have to call out is, we're getting very specific about who we identify as a personalized learning teacher. And we, you'll see here in just a few minutes with the micro credentialing, we don't call everybody that wants to work on school culture or classroom culture. They may be emerging as a PL teacher, but they're not a PL teacher really until they've been trained... but they're not a PL teacher really until they've been trained and they have, they have certain key components in place. I think that's really important, that we distinguish that, because you may go to a school and, and you'll hear, fifty percent of our teachers are doing PL. And we look at that school and we know of two. Again, we have to make sure we're all consistent and on the same grounds of how we're defining, how we're labeling someone as being a fully, you know, ready-to-go implementation of PL.
My concern when I asked that question, though, was if we only pick our best schools at personalized learning, we're the ones, and we don't look at the full range of what we have, and we don't look at the full range of socioeconomic backgrounds, that we aren't giving, we aren't looking at a fair sampling of children.
And I totally agree with you. And I, and Mrs. Cockroft, would you respond to that? Because you had, you had talked to me about that. Because you, in some ways, you have to have something to evaluate too, or to review. And they're looking at best practices. And if, so anyways, I'm going to ask you to, because I don't want to repeat what you said.
We had talked about the implementation that we're going to be scoring them against with this team and bringing extra district people as well to learn how to do this is against the full implementation, or as if they had been in it for years, when in reality they're not. So while we understand some of the schools are not in the same place, we wanted to look at where our schools that are at the highest and where they're missing it, knowing that these other schools have to come up to where these other ones are to start with, already understanding that they might not be at that same level. At the same time, we, as district leaders, will be trained on this rubric and this method as well, so that we can then go in and look at all of our schools as they come across to make sure that we are getting a true picture of what's going on in all of those schools.
So I, if I may dovetail off of that, I think there was a misunderstanding about the tool itself, because there's two phases of the tool. So the first phase of the tool that we talked about having at Lost Lake and at Wendy Hill Middle is really as if the school is fully implemented. It's like if you do an avid site visit, right? You don't come in and do the avid site visit after only a year and a half or two years typically. But we've had such promising work at Wendy Hill and Lost Lake, even though they are only in their first year and a half, it's worth doing it there. The other schools aren't quite as far along for a number of reasons. We have administrative changes at two schools. And honestly, at the high school level, personalized learning is just more difficult. Our students have been kind of trained in how school works for a lot longer, and it's a lot more difficult. I think in a community at high school, often that community is after-school or in the sports, where the community at elementary and middle is really based on the classroom. In the elementary school, that's all about the teacher and the student, spending most of the day with one teacher and a, and a community of that group of students. So the community pieces of personalized learning haven't had that chance to develop at the high school as well. So I apologize for going back and forth here. I just wanted those who are new to personalized learning on the board to be able to see that we have a website up here. It's under District Departments, and it has a wealth of resources. I didn't realize until Dr. Moxley mentioned it at Monday night's board meeting that she would like these documents online, so my apologies, Dr. Moxley. But I do have, what you have in your binder is online here now. But I think if you're interested in what's happening in our schools, if you click on the news dropdown, you'll see that there are articles and stories from each of our personalized learning schools. And you can see a lot about what's happening there. The schools are working very hard, and they're very proud of the work that they're doing. There's also a toolkit up here that takes you into resources for teachers along each of our three Cs for personalized learning, the components, the culture, and the curriculum. And if you click on any one of these icons that represent one of our microbadges, so you'll see how this is all tied together with microcredentialing, then there are additional resources for teachers to read or get more information on. And then for each badge, each microbadge, there are additional tools that teachers can use in the classroom. So we've worked very hard to make the website a resource for our teachers.
The Sepril data, will we, will we be expected to make assumptions based on it? Because it seems completely biased to me. Even with your explanation, I just, I can do the same thing with any sort of experiment. And if I only look at the good results, I'm only going to get exactly what I'm looking for.
So if I may add, that the idea is not to only look at good results. The idea is that the only schools that are ready for that type of evaluation right now are Lost Lake and Wendy Hill. You may or may not be aware that we asked the schools to implement personalized learning over four years. So I don't consider any school implemented yet, yes, because they're still working. As Dr. Moxley said, building that culture is critically important to any kind of transformation that they can have in the way the classroom works.
Right, so you said, you said we really should be looking at this in four years, but these two schools did great, so we're going to look at these two schools and not the other three. So that biases your data automatically. You're completely biasing your data. I, I just, and I'm fine, you can bias your data all you want, as long as I'm not supposed to make assumptions on it.
Well, it's, it's about two things, right? It is about where those two schools are. But it's also about teaching us how to be able to go in and evaluate all the schools as we're working with this outside agency too, looking through this rubric and through an unbiased eye with it as well. So yes, I see where you're saying we're looking at those two that are more implemented. But it's also about training us while we have this resource as well, so that we can do it with other schools.
Then I'll listen to your training piece.
So I guess, I guess where I'm, I'm trying to kind of process your bad results, where you're coming from. In these particular schools, they've been successful for a very long time, even before personalized learning. That typically Lost Lake and Wendy Hill were A schools before the learning gains kind of factored in, and, you know, kind of punched everybody in the gut. But this is probably where we've got some of the greatest pockets of success with personalized learning. But I guess the bad results that I'm trying to think about, those are probably occurring in classrooms where teachers think that they're doing personalized learning, but really it's computer-based instruction, or it's independent study, which was not the intention. So I guess, but you all wouldn't say that they're personalized learning classrooms.
That's correct.
But that's, but a teacher says they're doing personalized learning. So I guess how do you pull in those teachers, or, I mean?
Well, I think what we're trying to do through the microcredentialing is make sure that everyone has the same foundation of what personalized learning is. And so what we did initially, we did provide training every summer to schools who were coming on, but it's very expensive. And so schools could only send a core team, and so they did. And when the enthusiasm for personalized learning spread, because it has, teachers love this for the most part, then other teachers who may not have attended the training said, well, I'm going to try that. Let me take that tool. I'll put it to use in my classroom, without that background or that solid foundation of what personalized learning really was. And so with our microcredentials, we developed a way in-house to ensure that everyone has the same foundation and that that foundation is aligned to Lake County's vision for personalized learning.
So I guess, I guess the best practice is, don't do this until you've been properly credentialed.
Or at least have had the training. We have found that that's to be, I mean, and isn't that the case for most things, right? So, and, and we're working very hard.
Did your top, did the other three top five leading schools not get the correct training?
Everyone had access to that training. Two of the schools did have administration changes. And with new administrators, I think it's probably pretty typical to want to get a sense of the school. And I think that in some cases, the schools went too fast. And that was my opinion at the time. But, and so they have decided to pull back, which I think is very healthy.
What about the third?
The third, they are moving forward. They have some very positive things happening in that school. It's just still too small in implementation. Very positive things happening in that school. Graduation rate in that school has really improved.
But we can't, if we're just looking for positives, then we're, we're.
Well, I don't, I don't, I think that's where, kind of, we got a little bit of a hiccup here, because I know when we use the word "evaluation", I'm almost thinking that evaluation isn't the correct descriptor here. Because when I think of program evaluation, I think of you're going in and you're going to make some judgments. You're going to make some decisions that this, this is good, this is bad. This is not good, this is good, this is off-the-charts good. This is not being done to use it to make a decision of personalized learning is in at that school or personalized learning is out at this school. This was done to do, just I think what Mrs. Cockroft said, is to look at what are, at the implementation of it and the rollout of it. Are we rolling it out with fidelity? Is the implement, so we're really doing this as a quality control mechanism, not to make the decisions and the judgments that you have referenced. Because you're saying if it's a biased or skewed, then I can't make assumptions on it. You're exactly right on that. So this was never designed to say this is in, this is out, to make those kinds of decisions. It was to inform our learnings of the implementation and the rollout, so that as we bring, or other schools are coming on board, or other schools are advancing, we can say, you don't have to go through the school of hard knocks here. We know that this is a best practice, and this practice or of the rollout, this didn't work. This was not effective, and you, and it was inefficient. So we can come up with learnings, we can create the tools, and just what Mrs. Habeck said, that, so that we internally can build a system for that quality control. And that's rarely where we are now. I've already slowed down a lot of the, we had a very aggressive timeline of, you know, how many schools were going to come on board, and that we would have this option available. Never to be in a situation that every school, that, that we went from this traditional model to personalized learning, and it all had to look the same in every school, teacher by teacher, because then it's not personalized. But that we would have some options at every school that was available. But again, we're building, what are those effective? So it would, really, this, this group is coming in to assist us. We use the word "evaluation". I'm now sitting here second-guessing, is that the right term? But it, it is, they're evaluating our implementation so that we can learn from it and do better, not to determine, yes, you've got to stop doing personalized learning at that school. Because we know that they have data that is showing it's, they have some effectiveness in that data. So it's really not to sort out the good and the bad as much as to sort out the implementation and the rollout. But we will learn some things about, this was, this was a good rollout, or no, this is not a, we cannot count this as a best practice. So it's really to inform that, that learning. So I see it in a little different scope than what you were originally referencing. And I totally agree with what you were referencing, if it were being used for that purpose. But I don't think that's, you know, as you went, the way you stated it, was not how we were using it.
And I think it's about the whole school, right? So we're not ready to evaluate a whole school, because no school has had four years yet to implement it, which was their plan. But despite that, there are more classrooms at Wendy Hill and Lost Lake who are implementing. And so they are closer. For a classroom tool, we're going to extrapolate from that developmental rubric, is what we actually call it, to find a way to have a common look-for document for all of our PL classrooms that will be used in every school by classroom. And then once we accumulate a certain number of classrooms at a school that we feel are, have implemented well, then we'll be ready to, to say, okay, as a school, let's take a look and see if you are a PL school, if you will.
Question real quick, and it might be out of order. But your eighth graders that are on this, but then you said the high schools right now haven't implemented this. So what effect is this going to have on them when they go from eighth grade, being able to be a personalized learning versus now they're going back to the traditional learning?
That's the push and pull of the right pace to scale up. So it's, like Dr. Moxley said, we, we want to make sure it's done well. That's the most important thing. But we also want to have coherence for our students. So it doesn't feel like, wait a minute, the whole game just changed. So we have schools that are working intentionally in feeder patterns. Leesburg is doing a really nice job with that, about thinking about how they're going to take students from the elementary through the middle, through the high, with a different way of thinking. And if every school is implementing the culture, which can be done no matter where you are, then at least that type of environment in the classroom will be standard for students. Well.
And I think the other piece to it, Mr. Campbell, is, is that students that are, that are, that have gone through the cultural, environmental, flexible learning environment, they're learning student ownership and a student responsibility to, to control and drive their instruction that I think is a skill we want all our students to have. And I think they're coming, and when they've been in that environment, they're at a, at a greater proficiency level for that.
But my concern is, they are learning at their ability, and it may be a little slower than someone that is, is taking it and going with it. So therefore, now they're put into that environment where they've got to adapt to what's there, or they get left behind. So that's where my concern's at.
Yes, and I totally agree with that. And I, I think one of the things that we found is that we have that issue, whether it's a personalized learning environment or not. We're dealing with students who have progressed and have gaps in their learning. And teachers are struggling with how to make sure that they're teaching to the level of rigor that the new standards require, and still being able to meet the needs of those students who aren't there. So I believe that personalized learning is one way of addressing those gaps. But I think whether it's a personalized learning classroom or not, unfortunately, that's where we are.
And I would argue Yumattila has the opposite issue that they're facing. So the high school's PL high school, and they don't have the culture at the elementary or middle.
Correct.
And it's not even on the plans to come on board. Like, they're not even in the projection yet to come on board. So they're trying to take students that have never been through personalized learning and integrate them into the system, which is why they're saying it's not to a level of implementation.
And that's what happened at South Lake, I think.
Right. So I think that there's, you know, things that can be considered by the board in terms of how to move forward, if to move forward, and so forth. But, you know, we were very intentional originally by asking schools to sign on when they were ready. We didn't want it to be a top-down, everybody must do this. And so perhaps at this point, it's a different place and time now, and maybe thoughtful, strategic decisions should be made in terms of allowing schools to come on to fill feeder patterns or to ensure that students have that coherent progression from, from PL classroom to PL classroom. So this is just our interconnected goals. Accountability and continuous improvement is something that we have thought about. It's been one of our important goals from the beginning. Really, the way that most schools have started is with student-directed learning and flexible learning environments. Those are the two that they could dive into without having district frameworks and deep changes in the way things happen with competency-based progression or with learner profiles and individual passive success. So of these five, we're still very much in the beginnings with competency-based progression and with learner profiles. So one of the things that I think may not be clear is how PL integrates with so many different other departments and initiatives. And so the size of the bubbles has no bearing on the importance or the, the strength of that integration. It's just to accommodate the text, so. But starting with HR, I don't know if you all are aware, but the Lake County Schools' HR department uses the personalized learning website as a recruitment tool at UCF. So teachers are excited to come and teach in Lake County schools because of the personalized learning work. Testing and evaluation, of course, we're in that work right now with testing and evaluation with Mr. Farley coming on new. And so we're looking at ways that we can have a common understanding of how our schools are progressing. PD and IPD, of course, the, the time that teachers need for developing the resources to work in a personalized learning classroom. Student services, thinking about how counselors are helping kids choose different pathways and how students are, are graduation. Standards-based instruction, of course, all of our academics are focused on that. Technology, opportunities for students for virtual learning, if that is their preference, and that will help them succeed. Team, we were very intentional in thinking about who we brought in to do training for personalized learning. And that initial company was Reinventing Schools, which is a division of Marzano, so that when we were training teachers, it was all aligned to their teacher evaluation. And then curriculum instruction, of course. Because of the integration of the work with developing lessons and standards, we actually have, I have a sample in your book of a unit that was just developed with Pine Ridge, Sawgrass Bay, and Lost Lake Elementary. And Melissa Carley facilitated that, so that we were sure that the units that were being developed were strong from academic, from curriculum and instructions perspective, but also included the choice that we wanted to have in personalized learning. So when I think about where we are with personalized learning in schools, I think that we're very much still in the test phase. We have done a lot of strategy. We did that in December of 2013 and have continued that through on in different ways. One of the PowerPoints that you have in the beginning of the background does go through the PowerPoint that we used in 2013 to get information from a large number of stakeholders, including Dr. Todd Howard. A board member at the time was on that committee. We had parents. Board member at the time was on that committee. We had parents. We had business and community leaders, Clinton Powell now. And then we had directors from the district departments and teachers. We have designed a system or multiple systems. Each school has approached it slightly differently. We are building out resources and we are testing how that's working in our schools. We are not to implementation yet. In my estimation, we won't be until four years because that's what schools were asked to do. So competency-based progression really is a system in which the learners progress based upon mastery of the standards. So in our current system, time is a constant. Everybody's in seventh grade for one year, but the learning is the variable. Everybody in seventh grade does not learn all of the standards that are required for seventh grade. So in a competency-based system, the learning becomes the constant and the time becomes the variable. So if one student is in seventh grade and masters the seventh grade standards in six months, then that student is ready to move on. If another student is in seventh grade and needs more than the nine and a half months of seventh grade to master those standards, then really the learning is the most important thing. So that happens, the competency-based progression, really, when you think about it, it's in two ways. One is within the classroom itself. So currently, students get grades. And I think from a parent's perspective, probably everyone has experienced, you know, what exactly does that grade mean? If my child gets a C in Algebra I, what does that mean? Does it mean that my child only understood half of the content? Does it mean that my child understood all of the content but didn't turn in any homework? Does it mean my child was absent for a lot of the year and didn't get to take some of the tests? Does it mean my child understood it all but doesn't take tests well, so flunked every single test but turned in all of the homework? So what we're getting from the grade right now is not consistent from one teacher to another, is not consistent from one school to another, and doesn't provide actionable information for the teacher. So if I have a student who did get that C in seventh grade math and that student moves on to eighth grade math, what does the eighth grade teacher know about what that seventh grade student needs from that C? So the competencies are students doing a performance task that shows that he or she has mastered that particular standard or cluster of standards, depending on the content area, depending on the grade level. So we're a long way from this, but this is what this is leading to. In addition, we're thinking about the K-12 progression of students on the learning continuum. So, whoops, our 12th graders cut out there, but, oh no, 12th grader wrapped around. So if we think about our standard seventh grader again, and maybe that seventh grader in math is at a fourth grade level. So what is the teacher doing, kind of to get to Mr. Campbell's question? If that teacher really needs fourth grade level math work, how is the teacher adapting to that need right now? Or that same student may be a strong reader and may need reading materials at a much higher level. So with the competencies, it's about understanding exactly what the student can do in terms of the learning and then providing the right resources for each student based on that. So this is a quote that the gentleman referred to earlier. Probably that last part, which is talking about dropouts in college, is more about the college. But the beginning part is about students being prepared. And I've seen additional resources, research that say, says, sorry, that even students who graduate with As and Bs are having to take remedial courses in high school, in college. And so again, it's what does that grade mean? Does it mean that the student has mastered all of those standards and is ready to move on to college? So with competency-based progression, we're still in the very early stages. We have developed a strategy and in your competency-based progression session, you'll see there's the pilot application. So Lake County is one of four districts in the state who did receive a waiver to begin to test out competency-based progression. We have designed the competencies, the performance indicators, and today the last groups are working on the scoring criteria. And you can also see in this section, we have the work that we did with TritoEd to pull together a leadership team to determine how they felt it would be appropriate to move forward with competency-based progression and then their recommendations in terms of implementation. And we presented that to the executive cabinet and decided that we're going to put the implementation aside for the moment. Now that we have grant, or since we have grant dollars, we'll use the grant dollars to build up and develop all these resources and then we'll make decisions about the implementation soon. Okay, so Center for Research and Public, Center for Public Research Leadership is the next section. And this one I would like for you to look in your binder is behind tab three. And so as I mentioned, all of these documents are on the website. And I don't want to take time, I know you have a busy schedule, to go through these in great detail. But I wanted to share with you what these are. So CEPRL last year, as Dr. Moxley mentioned, was, we contracted with them and they did a really nice study about how our instructional priorities are aligned. And so if you look through this document, when you have time to peruse it in detail, you'll see that they've done a really good job of thinking about how one priority impacts and aligns to the others. So if you look on page seven, I don't see a page number there. There's a graphic that shows C2 Ready students in the center and personalized learning for students and ELL and struggling students and schools in the most center circle. And that's because those are the two initiatives that really impact the students. And then the outer rings of that circle are the support structures that the instructional priorities provide to support the work that teachers are doing ultimately to lead to student success. On page nine, there is the overview for personalized learning for students. And so you can see just a brief overview, the key activities, and then the alignment analysis for personalized learning with all of the other instructional priorities. And on the back of that page, on page 10, there are the leverage points. And so this is a report that was developed with our personalized learning funds to think about how personalized learning fits in the bigger system. But it really does tell the story of all of the instructional priorities.
Wait, where is the report?
It's right behind tab three. Yes, right there. That's it.
So tab three is the report?
Tab three is the report, yes. And there are a couple, yes. So there are a couple of other documents in here that you may want to look through too when you have more time. One of them is, right behind that long report is a theory of action for personalized learning. And it does the graphic that looks like this.
I'm sorry, the check marks, does that mean we've done that correctly?
Uh, no, that's just their graphic for a bullet.
So are these things we should do?
Look back.
Leverage points, it says.
Okay. Yes.
Those are things they're recommending.
Yes, correct.
Are considered.
We've got the sound up now, don't we? Okay. Right behind that 24-page report is a two-pager, three-pager, I guess, that gives you kind of in a nutshell, it's kind of your Cliff Notes, that has the theory of action for personalized learning and then the 10 building blocks that CEPRL identified by both interviewing in Lake County Schools and interviewing a lot of districts across the nation who are engaged in this work. So it looks like this on the front, Ms. Burns, and then, yes. So that puts it all in a nutshell. It tells in bullet points why each of those particular building blocks is important to the success of personalized learning. And then the last piece in the CEPRL section is the results of survey data that CEPRL conducted, 95 respondents from our personalized learning schools answered questions on a survey about their feelings of how well-suited we are to success in each of those different building block areas.
What's the scale? Oh, sorry.
Yes. So the dark red is strongly disagree. The medium red is disagree. The kind of rose is agree. Good.
I see, I see.
All right, so they do the ranking for each of those 10 building block areas. And then the idea is to pull the problem of practice group together and allow them to pick a problem as they identify it in terms of priority of importance and come up with some potential solutions for those problems. So the CEPRL work is critical to help us thinking about how well we're doing things at a very high level, but also including a lot of different stakeholders to give their voice to that work. So the next section is microcredentiaing. And this is all on the website, but I don't want to divert to the computer again. So the first item in your book is directly from the website. It's the pathway that we have set out for teachers to earn microcredentials. So what is a microcredential? A microcredential is a competency-based, it's competency-based professional development. So instead of attending and in-service and leaving and perhaps understanding and perhaps not, teacher has an option for how they learn the material. And we have three different pathways. The pathway, there's one pathway that is an online scenario-based pathway. Another is face-to-face where teachers who do prefer the traditional model, where they can get together and talk through their ideas, have that option. And then there's a choose-your-own pathway for teachers who have been implementing and they have a great idea and they just want to go for it. And so what we require is the image on the far left of the paper. It's the personalized learning foundations. So to get at our conversation earlier about do teachers really understand what PL is, we're finding that this personalized learning foundations credential really ensures that everybody's on the same page, that there are no misconceptions about personalized learning as computer-based. That's cleared up right from the beginning. It's not a packet of information. It's not independent study. So those things are making very clear. Once a teacher takes the foundations badge, then the teacher can pick and choose what interests him or her. And so each of the badges is designed to be about three to five hours of work. And once completed, the teacher would get a chart with a sticker for the particular badge that they've earned. And these are posted in some of our schools already. And they also get a certificate of completion. They get their in-service points and they get a little button for their lanyard. So currently, it's.
They want to have a Girl Scout session.
Yes, yes, we have had that conversation, yes. So if you look at the next item in your binder, we have an infographic that gives you the information on what's currently happening with our microcredentiaing path. So we have, let's see, 244 active participants. We started in October, so those numbers are pretty good. You can see that we have 81% teachers, 4% principals, 3% district staff, 13% non-classroom. Those would be coaches. We have, did the teachers complete in three to five hours? 77% said yes, so that was important information for us. Which model did teachers prefer? I thought that was interesting. 64% preferred the online scenario. And our performance task distribution, you can see there, how many went through on their first attempt. So once a teacher has completed whatever pathway they choose, online, face-to-face, choose their own pathway, they all have to submit a demonstration of mastery, so a project. And we give them a couple ideas for each project and then they can always come up with their own. So the state has been very interested in this work and they have contacted us a couple of times and they're actually coming down to be a part of one of our demonstration of mastery sessions. Seminole County has also reached out to us because they're very interested in the work that we're doing with this as well as with our competency-based work. And so the question that we always get is, well, how many teachers go right through? Because I think they're worried it's too easy. So you can see from here that 48% go through on the first attempt, but after two attempts, it's all but just 14%. So what we found is that it's a great practice for our teachers to score against a rubric. And we intentionally set it up so that it is modeling personalized learning. So just like in a classroom, students might have different pathways based on the way that they prefer to learn. But they're all showing that they know the material by demonstrating mastery against a rubric. This is what we're asking our teachers to do too.
I guess the question I would have would be, does each mode of delivery result in a different success rate? Because it seems less than half are passing it on the first try. I wonder if those folks are all in one particular. If they're all the online people versus the face-to-face, is there a difference?
I'm curious about that too. Okay, thank you. That's a great question. Thank you.
We're actually looking at that, at the microcredential that we have for the targeted feedback with the administrators. So that's a great question.
I do apologize for laughing, I'm sorry. But is there a way to make it a little less juvenile, like?
Which part?
The badges.
So.
Like, I mean, that's pretty.
But it is really clear.
It's very clear. But calling them badges, I mean, it really does sound very Girl Scout.
So actually, that's, the microcredentiaing is very current and out there in just this way.
It's actually, that's the national language.
Yes, the national, yeah, the badging and everything.
Being used. And that's, so we didn't come up with the term badging.
We can't rebrand it.
That was, that's on a national level.
Universities are discussing integration of badges and to reprogram. So I worry that if we changed our language locally to de-juvenile it, that it wouldn't transfer, that there would be a lack of that consistency from program to program. It would be my biggest concern.
So maybe explain, I don't know, when you talk to teachers, let them know that it's not your fault.
Well, I have to tell you that it really surprised me because I'm figuring, you know, everybody's, they're just going to want that digital badge because we're working with True North Logic to see if we can get that digital badge as part of the teacher's portfolio that administrators could look at when they're looking to hire. But teachers were really interested in this and in the badges on their lanyard. So, yes. It's that physical evidence of what they've accomplished.
I used to get certificates. I mean, it's not that, I think you want that completion thing. And I don't mind people getting it in chunks, in manageable chunks. I think that's a good idea.
It establishes them as a leader in that field then, that, you know, they could be a go-to person and it establishes them as a leader on their campus that they have had that completion with it.
We just need to sell it.
It's actually selling itself pretty well with that number of participants. So it's very, I think we'd be hard-pressed to have that many going through from October in any other way, honestly. So I will tell you that this was designed for you to see that we don't have any teachers that have that many yet. So most of them only have a couple badges before. And then behind this are all of the spec sheets. So basically, that, oh, one more section. Section five, I asked each of the schools to create a one-pager that kind of encapsulates their personalized learning direction in a really short, concise way. And so in the very last section, you've got a one-pager from each of the schools, with the exception of Eustace Middle. Eustace Middle didn't come through in a way I could print it out, so we'll get that to you and up on the website very quickly. But I like these in that they can give you, as you're going to visit schools or as you're talking to people from those schools, you'll kind of have just the base idea of how they're approaching personalized learning. So I know that's a lot of material and there's a ton of material in your book. I just wanted you to have context for those different pieces. So if you do want to dive deeper into any of these areas, you would have the base understanding and know that all of that information is on the website. And I hope that you see that although the focus has been on the schools, that there's been a ton of work that's been happening at the district level too. We haven't forgotten that. We just intentionally wanted the schools to have the opportunity to explore this in a way that they know is best for their kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think probably going forward, I'm sure there's still plenty of questions that board members have. So I think this is probably going to be a topic that's going to be a little more regular on our agenda. And so between now and the next appearance. One of the things that I found really helpful was going through classrooms and observing. And you were nice enough to do a walk, Dr. Moxley, you came along on those as well. And it was bizarre to see, well, not so bizarre, but you could really see quite a difference in some classrooms versus another and where it was working really well and where it. well and where it wasn't even close to hitting the mark. Um, and, and so I think that prompted a lot of good dialogue, too.
Thank you. I know we'd love to come back anytime.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us to the kindergarten report card update.
I, I think Mrs. Cole is prepared to do this presentation in about five minutes.
Two.
Two minutes, okay.
And I'll take thirty seconds. You heard that before, thirty seconds.
Yes.
Earlier in the year, uh, we did respond to some teacher concerns, uh, from kindergarten teachers primarily concerning the kindergarten report card, primarily in the area of how many times do we need to document mastery of subject area? Now, what was in place, what was in place was developed by kindergarten teachers, and it was, as it went into effect this year, I think, uh, it was caught them by surprise about the labor intensiveness of a, of a, a program that they actually designed. So, uh, it all started with listening to their concerns, and, uh, that's the foundation, and Ms. Cole, that was my thirty seconds.
I guess that means they have a minute and a half, okay. Well, first of all, board, um, school board members and Dr. Moxley, um, what we typically do at the end of each year, and I had this experience as a principal and now in this position, is that we call teachers together to help us for a number of curriculum topics. One of them to revise and tweak the curriculum blueprints, if we need a team to, um, develop a particular focus, a writing team, for example, we did the K-five writing plan this year. The kindergarten report card is the same thing. We invite teachers, we usually try to invite, uh, grade-level chairs to come in, and we listen to the feedback that we receive all throughout the year to address any concerns that come across our plate or we need to tweak and revise. Kindergarten report card is no different. So I believe it was fourteen, fifteen, it was decided that, first of all, it would be eighty-five percent of the standards required for, uh, promotion for the fifteen, sixteen year, and then the sixteen, seventeen year would go to ninety percent. Well, last February, uh, it came to our attention that maybe we wanted to leave it at eighty-five percent, have a couple of years to really study that, then we had the academic tutors we put in place, so this year is still eighty-five percent of those standards. At the same time, at fourteen, fifteen was decided that there would be, for each standard, a student had to demonstrate mastery three times. And just before the winter break, it was brought to our attention to reconsider that, that it was, uh, noted that some teachers were feeling somewhat overwhelmed. Now, obviously, our ultimate goal is to make sure our students are prepared and ready so that when they get promoted to first grade, they can be successful. But we also want to be sensitive to the teacher needs. So that all being said, uh, it was decided to change that three to two. So each of the standards, her, is required mastery twice. And so, uh, that became effective immediately. Initially, we thought we could finish out the year and start next year, but we were asked to go ahead and put it in place right away, which we did. We emailed all the principals, along with the literacy coaches, to let them know, to let their teachers know this. And then I reiterated at our past, uh, uh, principals' meeting, which was just a few days ago. Uh, so that's where we are, and we will continue to listen to the feedback we receive throughout the year, and at toward the end of the year, we will call everybody together in these different groups for different curriculum topics to make sure that we put products and put procedures in place that help our students be successful, yet try not to put too much pressure and stress on our teachers. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Can, is it, is it in Skyward yet? Have, have we migrated that component into Spurts Public?
As, I think you're asking me about the checklist?
Yes.
That has not happened yet. Uh, IT is still working with, um, our folks to try to get that to happen. I guess the way, I don't know much about the technology piece of that, I just know that at the time, I guess Skyward was not, you couldn't mesh it together. And evidently, there are quite a few steps to go through to get that, but that is something they're aware of, and we're still trying to work toward that. I think that hopefully, I haven't heard much from the teachers in reference to that or the principals now, it was more about the mastery, so we were able to put that in place right away, but it's still there.
And, and I guess, I've got a couple of, of questions, and, and this is, this is one of them, I, I do have the luxury of seeing it from a parent's side because I, I do have a kindergarten, and, um, and, and I think the report card that comes home, um, might be a bit confusing for a parent, that, you know, the report card, they, they, they see three subjects, language arts, reading, and math, and it would either say E, S, N, or U, I think, um, and, and so, it, it, I guess it's tough to figure out what that, what that means, you know, so, so let's say my kid's got an E in reading, um, if I go onto Skyward, um, i- and I click on that, you know, I'll see all the standards that I think were probably taught, and I can see his, I can see scores for each one of those, those items. But you have to, I guess you have to kind of make this, this connection. And then, at the, on the report card itself, it tells you how many standards the kid mastered in each nine weeks, but from a parent's side, I don't know how many they attempted. And so I think that if, if, you know, because I, I look at it and go, well, I, I guess he's, I guess he's doing fine, or, or I'm not, not so sure. Um, because I, I don't know which ones he might have attempted but didn't succeed on versus, um, how many were just not even taught, or not even assessed that, that grading period.
Okay, but do you get the progress report to indicate where he is when progress reports-
I think the progress report as well also just says E or S or, you know, so it doesn't really give that deep detail to know whether or not, you know, specifically, now, now the teacher herself, I mean, she sends, you know, a little summary of, uh, you know, but once again, this is, I guess, all teacher-created, where, where they might send a summary of, of what they've worked on for the nine weeks, and, and might circle some things that, that need extra practice, but that's not necessarily communicated in Skyward. So that might vary based on teacher to teacher as to how much information a parent gets.
Okay, I know we sent out a letter explaining the whole process of how to read it and interpret it on Skyward, and that goes out. I'm kind of looking from, from a principal's perspective, what used to go out, and the progress report actually had the checklist, uh, where you would have, you would kind of know, um, and you may remember this, as far as, because some of the standards come at different times during the year.
Right.
There's some that are not tested to the last nine weeks, so that one may not necessarily be reflected. Um, and the whole idea of doing the, putting the information in the Skyward rather than a date completed to actually have a score, and you, the, the E, the N, it actually is the E, the S, and the WT working towards, because these improvements just didn't sound right, um, has the breakdown of, um, the point, the percentages that they have. But I'll check on, on the, the documentation. Um, a lot of times, it is a school-based decision to create a document to provide that information, and it will, if we have to, we can ask for some samples that are out there. And then we, if we need to standardize something, there's a little more detail, because the last thing we want is for our parents to be confused about what it is that's happening, and a lot of that is that communication piece between school and parents, making sure they know what standards are being tested, when are they being tested, when they've mastered it, what the score is, especially if they get promoted and they struggle in first grade, and you look back and see what the score was, you can kind of gauge what happened. But I'll double-check on that.
Yeah, I guess it, it seems like to go to the next level, it's, it's probably some sort of tweak in Skyward, where, I guess in the ideal world, as a parent, I'd love to get the grid of here are all the standards, and then I can see checkmarks for which ones are mastered, which ones were not mastered, or, or, you know, which ones are still being worked towards, and which ones were not tested. So I know whether or not I, I should worry, you know, I, because you're right, some things don't even occur to the fourth nine weeks, so it might look like, well, maybe halfway through the year, you haven't necessarily mastered half the standards, but that's okay because they're not even, you know, to that point yet. It's just hard to tell, you know, early on.
And I have to laugh because coming from this, this document, that's the way it used to come home, was a list of the standards, and then it would have like first nine weeks, and if it wasn't tested, it would have like NA, 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 NA. And the ones that were tested would have the score, the three, the two, or the one at the time, or the four, three, two, one, but it's just, um, and I feel like this with the team committee, too, not to just kind of give everybody this overview, but we just continue to revise and revise and revise, and nothing is consistent, and that sometimes, I think we talk about communication being such a big issue, but holy cow. So it was like that, within the feedback came back to this now, I don't know. It's just interesting to me to see this globally changing document that's now coming back around to one of its revisions from the last six, seven years.
Well, I think that the kindergarten report card is always going to be one of those.
It's always changing.
It's always going to be one of those that you keep looking at. Now, the pupil progression checklist does have, is, is designed to have the documentation inside the checklist, and in the very end, it's supposed to have, like, if there are thirty-five standards, like twenty-three out of the thirty-five have been mastered, et cetera. But I'll double-check to see exactly what it is that the parents are getting from school to school to school, as far as, um, the report card and a breakdown, just to see if we can come up with something a little different if, if that is not happening, and just double-check.
Was that the progress report that the checklist comes, that you just described? Was that the progress report you said, or just a checklist?
Well, the checklist is, is what's in the system, and, and, but the progress report could vary from school to school depending on what they sent out. We used to be very standardized, but, you know, it's a lot of school-based decisions, so we'll look.
Right.
We'll look into that. You had another question?
I did. Uh, so, so my question is, I guess a little, uh, change of pace in terms of the, the amount of time spent assessing students, you know, back, my, back when I was teaching, my, my big beef was that I spent two weeks at the end of every quarter pulling these kids back one-on-one, and, you know, I, I just felt like I lost so much instruction in that. With, with this new approach, um, are, are teachers finding that they get more instructional time, there's, it's more time-consuming for them to create these assessments, or?
I have not heard anything about too much time to assess.
I have.
It was more, um, um, I'm sorry, it was more the number of times. Now, hopefully, with the reduction in the number of times, we'll give them more instructional time, because now they don't have to do the third. So that in itself should provide them with more instructional time.
What I've heard is that, is that teachers are sort of, there's fifty-five, fifty-five? How many standards are there?
There are, uh, for math, there are probably twenty-two, many of them at the end of the nine weeks, um, the, um, there may be thirty-five ELA for the year.
Okay, so fifty-five.
And it, depending on where the instruction is taking place, depends upon what standards are coming up for mastery.
Right, so what I hear from kindergarten teachers is that they're going ballistic trying to figure out how to evaluate eighteen times fifty-five standards, twice, now twice a year, which is better than three times a year, I agree, but I don't understand the need for that in kindergarten. I mean, what is our real purpose? And, I'm, I'm not going to know, as a parent, I'm not going to know what KGA-dash-one is, or how, whatever we call it, you know, like, what, what, like, what is the purpose?
Well, when you go into, um, what, okay, there's two questions there.
I haven't seen the, I also haven't seen it.
When you go into, when you go into your child's, you correct me if I'm wrong, they, the standard is actually spelled out as to what the standard is. And, um, the purpose, obviously, is to make sure our students are, are mastering the skills that they need in order to be successful as they move toward each grade level. We all have the standards, we have to assess them. Um, so by, um, looking at, go ahead.
Well, I just, can't we group them? Is reading on a X-grade level, you know, is doing math at a, at a, you know, you know, ha, quarter, you know, on grade level for quarter way through the first nine weeks, you know, like, has mastered the, the, what, the work that we've done? Like, we have blueprints, like, I, I just, this is so detailed for a teacher, it just seems extreme.
Well, I think the only way you can know if a student has mastered a standard is to look at each one of those standards as they are taught. Now, it doesn't mean that a particular assessment they use only addresses one particular standard, there could be more than one on there. But if they don't assess them, how would they know that they've mastered the standard that they need to a kindergarten or first or second or any grade level?
I guess, I guess the question is, what do you mean by assess? Like, do you mean, like, in the course of doing their work, the teacher has figured out that this kid has done, yeah?
They have tests.
I mean, so-
If they scored.
When I, when I was teaching my daughter, I knew exactly where she was with reading. Now, she was only one child, not eighteen, and I know that my mom, who teaches first grade, knows where, exactly where each one of her kids are. And yes, they have tests, but they're, you know, age-appropriate tests. Um, and first grade doesn't have fifty-five things to fill out. Like, why does kindergarten?
I'm not sure what I mean by fifty-five.
Fifty-five checkboxes.
They have standards, though, they still have, they have standards, just like every grade level has standards. They may document them, they're, they're in putting the grades into the, um, Skyward, but they have standards, ELA, math, and then they bring on social studies, science, and the others throughout the grade level. They still have standards, and they have to document the standards and grade them and assess them.
Doesn't mean they're giving fifty-five different assessments.
No, no.
They may evaluate a student or the students, and there may be four or five standards in that one's, you know, one activity that comes in, and they're, but, yes, there are fifty-five standards between the two, but that doesn't mean they're doing fifty-five assessments.
But I think a first-grade teacher doesn't have to go back at the beginning and the end of the year, or at the beginning of the year, they have to do an assessment, and at the end of the year, they have to go back and make sure that this matches this and this matches this, and that, because they've done it as they've gone.
They, they don't have to wait to the end of the nine weeks to do the assessment. So if I'm teaching this number, I would assess then, and then I would record it. It's not that at the end of the nine weeks, I have to go and reassess everything, it's as I'm teaching across the course of the year.
This isn't like, now, today I got to do fifty-five standards and assess all of eighteen of my children today.
Then, I don't know, there's something going on with, with kindergarten, and maybe I, I need to-
And the interesting thing here is that when we're revising, this is like the second or third revision to this, we had twelve, thirteen, um, kindergarten teachers in on this that worked on this. I mean, this was not something that was done in isolation.
Did they see the final product?
We, yes. Absolutely, they actually worked on it, and now we brought them back in to revise it. So, um, this has not been something that, that two people at the district office did and sent to them, it actually came from kindergarten teachers. Carmen, it started with Carmen Arnold-
Right, right.
-two years ago, and she had, I think there were twelve-
Yes.
-teacher, kindergarten teachers, there were actual, active kindergarten teachers that came out and were very passionate about working on this.
Yeah, I don't know how to, I don't know how to come up with a solution.
Well, I think that we will always, um, just like curriculum blueprints, you know, you have your scope and sequence, and teachers will provide feedback saying that maybe it would be better to switch this particular order to that particular order, and we bring those teachers back to kind of look at it and revise it and tweak it if we need to. We're always going to be listening to the teachers and what the feedback is, because they're in the, they're, they're in the trenches. There, they are working with the students. And like I said, we are more than willing to provide any kind of guidance and assistance any way that we can. Uh, when I met with the elementary principals, I said, now that your teachers are aware that they only have to assess twice, I mean, students only have to show mastery twice as opposed to three, are they feeling less stressful? And, and honestly, I can tell you, I had some looking at me like, what are you even talking about? I didn't say anything about being stressed, but, um, I, I said, are, they are happy, right? And they were like, yeah. Well, we work with the literacy coaches as well to make sure that information is going out, and we are on campuses. Our folks go out there, we have a share placement that works with kindergarten teachers all the time, and so does Val Perreira. So we're always, you know, listening with listening ears to make sure we address their concerns, and if they have questions. And a source yours as well. That will be ongoing, that will not stop. Okay? Anything else? If you have other questions, just let me know.
So I'll, I'll, I'll call you, maybe we can set up a time to talk more in depth about Skyward and how it might be a little user-friendly for, for a parent. And I, I think that's, that, that'd go a long way in terms of the reporting, how, how that works.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Mr. Don, how do you want to proceed with the rest of the afternoon?
Somebody's coming all the way from Claremont, so I want to make sure she gets her, her opportunity in the sun here, and, and you said the Health Science Academy only needs about a ten-minute update?
Yes.
And then, um, the attendance boundary, I don't know, that will be very lengthy.
So we can do those three things.
And, um-
Yeah, Spring Creek's here.
Yeah, yeah, he's here.
I agree. Okay, please come forward. We have, uh, Dr. Doyle, Julie Llewellyn, and I see Stacy Keenies here, our assistant principal at East Ridge. Thank you both for being here, and Supreme Bill Banks.
Good afternoon, school board members and Dr. Moxley. Thank you for this opportunity to bring to you the East Ridge High School Alternative Education Development Program, um, that is housed at East Ridge High School, that serves three of our high schools. Also want to point out that this is an alternative placement in lieu of expulsion. Um, the school team is here, they will talk about the history of the program, the purpose, the cost, expectations, and standard operating procedures. I think it's important that you, um, know that back in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, um, Ms. Llewellyn came to me, we had some deep conversations about this program, because at that time, some of the statutes changed, where those kids' grades and graduation was going to the servicing school. So she asked for an opportunity to re-establish expectations, revamp the program, look at hiring practices. Because, um, she always want to do the right things for children. And, um, she'll talk about that in her presentation. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the principal.
I would've said good morning a few hours ago, but I'll say good afternoon now. A little bit about the history of the program, Ms. Cole was the originator who bought this before the, uh, Dr. Moxley. I don't even know if Dr. Moxley was in place at that point, um, before the superintendent and the board before to get this program started. Um, the reason was down at East Ridge High School and South Lake High School, the kids were just dropping out because they were not going to ALI. And you can understand that when you look at coming from the Four Corners and trying to travel all the way to ALI, the amount of time that it was taking. So that was one of the main reasons was the dropout rate. Um, right now, the program, we can serve up to thirty students at one time. Uh, it is now the three schools with Lake Manyola coming on board. Uh, most of our students are placed there for alternative placement. They can be there for a half year, a full year, or a forty-five day placement with five oh four. And we also service ELL in this, in this. Um, the mission of our program really is for kids to earn high school credits, to modify their behavior, to change what they've been doing, what got them placed there in the first place, uh, to build some self-esteem and to experience some success. Because a lot of these kids that come there have not experienced any success. A part of our program, um, that we really worked on and went to Dr. Dole about was revamping who we had on staff and who was doing this. Because, uh, you know, we hire from all three schools, uh, is where our teachers, administrators, and staff come from. One thing that I don't do is the bookkeeper, is my bookkeeper at East Ridge High School because we have to work closely together on the program. Dr. Keveney, who is here, has been a part of the program since two thousand two, I believe, since it opened, two thousand six. Um, she's been a part of that and really I got a lot of positions up there. We work with, uh, four administrators, APs from the three different schools, one different one every night. Um, we have deputies every night on duty and we have counselors twice a week for the kids there. Teachers, we hire two per night that come on. They are all content area teachers, mostly math is where we find that the kids struggle the most. So we have three math teachers in the program. ELA, social studies, science, which is our biology, which is a tested area, and we had to add a, add a hope teacher this year. Uh, so those are the ones. The eduginity teacher coordinator that we have there is, uh, actually one of our math teachers. Uh, she's really good at this because this is a person who has to be on duty twenty-four seven because the kids don't come to school on Friday. They work over the weekend and she must be able to move them forward on their quizzes and stuff to keep them progressing through the program. I have a data clerk, records clerk, and there, and I really don't have those two people in place. Dr. Keveney is my data clerk, she's my records clerk, she's my counselor. Because she is the person who has to sit and, um, take on the people's, the kids' schedules from the time, all the way up to FTE. Somebody has to do this and she is the person that does that for me. Um, she becomes the administrator in my absence because she does deals with the discipline if I'm not there. The budget that we have for this year, you can see there, the instructional staff is mostly in staff and transportation. When I look at the administrat- the administrator and bookkeeper, the sixty thousand that's there, also know that this is where I take materials, supplies. Anything that we have to purchase for our kids, we do it out of that sixty thousand dollars. And, um, that pays for all the administrators and the bookkeeper, that's a part of that.
Are any of those transportation costs reimbursed by the state or is that all just above and beyond?
Ms. Banks?
Uh, no, they're not.
So it's all above and beyond?
What document are you referring to, Dr.?
I'm returning to, referring to the budget book for, um, and it's online, for, uh, twenty sixteen. This number roughly matches what, what is marked for transportation. And nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is marked for the actual budget for the program. So, it's.
What we'll do is I will get Mrs. McLeod to follow up with you so we can answer that question.
And this is actually our budget for sixteen seventeen that we have.
This makes sense.
And, um, I will tell you that transportation varies. Last year, we only spent like fifty-six thousand out of that when the gas prices were down, but it depends on the kids that come in there. So this is why we have the ninety-six, because we have been as high as that with transportation bills. The students who come into our program, uh, use eduginity. Also, my expectation now with all the accountability pieces that we have is that, uh, the teachers actually have to do small groups and work with kids. Because a lot of the kids that come into the program have not passed Algebra I, the assessment, the ELC. And they struggle with that, the majority of them do. Uh, we have a biology teacher, uh, that works with the kids in there on all the ELCs. I mean, had great results she has with biology, that's probably our best one. But most of the kids that come from all three schools struggle with the Algebra I, that is the biggest thing. Um, all the teachers are certified in the content areas. Um, the one thing that Dr. Keveney and I found out working through the program is when people send seniors out their senior year, that they usually don't have the fine art, the practical and performing art credit. So we had to go in and our teachers of the program had to establish these courses for these kids and get them taken care of so that they can graduate and move forward. Because like I said, we do just really cover the content area classes in the after-school, I mean, the night program. Some parent involvement things that we have, we have an orientation that starts out in August where I meet with all the parents along with Dr. Keveney. Talk to them about the expectations of the program, um, what they can expect to receive from us as a group of educators. And the parents will often have questions, you know, because they automatically assume that this is some type of prison system that they're coming to. We are very strict in what we do. It is not like the normal school. The kids come in at three twenty in the afternoon, the school resource officer, the teachers, and administrator all meet them at the bus. Because we don't allow them to travel on our campus. They go up to their rooms, if they bring backpacks, they're searched. This is all about the safety of, and educating these kids while they're up there. So it is very, a strict environment that we run for them while they're up in night school. So it's very different from our day. Um, uh, the intake process is where Dr. Keveney and I, once Ms. Banks sends us a kid that needs to go into the night school. We sit down with that parent and, uh, discuss the kid's schedule, um, our expectations for their conduct. We talk about their behavior, what got them there, how we're gonna try to change that, and how we want them to be successful. Most of the kids that come to our night school program have a point five to a one point two GPA when they come in. Some come with no credits at all. And in that timeframe, we get them moving, usually you'll see a little later in our data that usually they leave there with about a two point one. And I know that doesn't seem much on the outside, but it's huge for those kids. Um, I do all the discipline, talk directly with the parents, meet with them. This is not just, we call up, a lot of times we have to have them come back in, let's retalk about why your kid is in this program, why they wanna be in this program. So it's a lot of those things that we have to do one-on-one with the parents. Uh, we do academic and behavioral contract. This year, I had to buy six laptops because the thing is, most of these kids are free and reduced lunch kids. We had to provide some access along with cards for them to be able to have at home for them to work over the weekend and to continue to work. Because we want them to get the credits and they can't do it all in the four days that they're there, so we want them to work over that time. Um, we do career and academic counseling because we found that a lot of these kids are gonna be our career kids. And where are we talking to these kids about what their future could hold? And we needed to do a better job in that because we were not, we were focused on academics and that's one of our expectations is that we put in, that we do career counseling with our kids and talk to them about their futures and where they could go. Uh, we also do a lot of character education, as you can see with that group that we have. Some of our data over three years, and this is not including this year, we had eighty-three, eighty-three students served in the East Ridge High School ADP program. Eighty-five percent of those kids completed successfully. And what we call that is that they leave, if they're there a half a year, we expect them to complete three credits at a minimum before they go back. And more, the more time you're in, the more we expect you complete. But that's a minimum of what we expect them to complete and most kids exceed that in there. Uh, we had to expel six kids over the three years, two students were withdrawn to GED program. And five students either transferred out of state or went to a different district. Eighty-six percent of the enrolled students began East Ridge High School with a two point oh, I mean, uh, less than a two point oh, and I told you about that. And then when they leave, it's at the two point one. This is the number of credits earned each year, we gain a little bit more. Last year was seventy credits that the kids earned in the program, no matter how many it was, that's about how many they averaged out to earning there. Uh, and we had seventy-one students, percent, seventy-one percent of the students leave with a two point oh or higher. As Dr. Dole stated earlier, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, everything changed, uh, with the accountability piece. Um, for who was responsible for this, uh, school, it is coded on the different school number of nine oh two two. And we're oh eight oh one at East Ridge High School. But what happened was any school that shared the same address under the same roof, they started holding us accountable for everything they did. From graduation rates to all of their, uh, data, everything, every test the kids took, it all went into East Ridge High School's data. So you know the mindset of the teachers and everything changed at East Ridge about how we're running the program, how am I hiring the teachers? Are they proven? Because this, this counts on all of us now. So we revamped how we hired people, we advertised to every school, but they must bring in three years of data to show that they are used to moving and growing kids. This is not a tutoring, this is not an after-school, let's go get some money. This is not a second job for you, you gotta love what you're doing because these kids, they're a struggle. And you gotta have built relationships with these kids to get them to move. So we looked at all of that when we were talking about hiring teachers and most of them have come. We pulled out some great teachers that are part of the program. We only work them one night a week because we don't wanna burn anybody out because nobody's gonna give you their best five, four and five nights a week. So they come in one night a week, but we've seen some success in our hiring. The teachers that are vested in the program are really vested, they care about these kids beyond them. They often call or talk to me about what the kids are doing in classrooms and wanna know outside of their regular day, how these kids are performing and whether they went back into their school and whether they're successful. Um, some implications of the program, which I was just talking about. Our graduation rate at East Ridge High School, when the, the state did this, cost us a graduation full percentage point from the kids in night school. And I want you to understand, when they come in twelfth grade, if, if, if a school puts them out, they can put them out at Christmas time. If they're not on track for graduation, that now becomes East Ridge High School's student and it counts against us. And most of them that come in that don't make it, they are not on track to make it from twelfth grade, but that counts against us. So what we have up there is talking about how it impacted us last year and I'm working with Mary Minnis right now because I think it impacted us. We were at eighty-nine percent graduation rate, so the ADP program got eighty-nine percent too. But I think we lost another percentage point from the seniors that came in from last year that didn't make it. Um, all of the FSA and ELC scores are calculated into our teach, uh, East Ridge High School. And the one thing that it impacts is my teachers is, uh, it impacts their VAM scores, the ones that are up there. They just did roster verifications for those kids to verify that they were there and it impacts that individual teacher who is teaching there at night. So they have some stuff vested in this when they're working with these kids also.
So they don't look at the counts from October to February, it's just when they enroll, they're automatically on the roster?
Yes, if they're there for the full year, they look at it now, they'll do the roster verification October and they'll do it in February. And most of the kids hit them with that.
That criteria.
Right, okay, okay.
And so that has been different for our teachers, but I, I believe we have some of the best that are up there that are willing to take that and to, and believe that they can move these kids and, and that's a big part of it. And, um, so they don't, they, they don't have many conversations back to me about the VAM scores. They know it's attached and they believe that they're well enough that they can get through with these kids. One of the things that, that we had last is, is really talking about hiring teachers that were vested and believed in East Ridge High School, how this could hurt our entire school. And, um, you know, when we hire administrators from other schools, they're not connected to East Ridge High School except for they work there at night. But the teacher has the VAM score and everything connected and we were just talking about how the administrators are not. What, what is their thing, what is their goal to see it move forward? And I think it's just pressing, wanting to see the kids on the south end move forward and progress. Because we had too many dropouts before and the program has been working for us. We believe in it and we believe in the kids that go in there. These kids needed this second chance. And, and nine times out of ten, they're proving us right by giving them the second chance. They're making it through the program and going on to be successful because we have lots of kids that come back and tell us where they moved on to. They have jobs or either they're in school or doing something successful with their stuff.
I have a question on the transportation. Uh, so, because, uh, the situation that we just ran across with one of our meetings. Uh, the young man having to, he'd be transported to there. So, do they have a central location that they have to go and meet or they're just picked up randomly around the county or that area?
Door-to-door pickup for these kids, we go to their houses to pick them up. But one is on the south end and we know that it rolls between, uh, Manyola all the way down to Four Corners. Uh, as far over as Stucky, Mascot-Stucky area. Um, we, they, they plan out the routes and stuff from us then, but that's the area that it travels. And it just depends on the kids that are in there, where they live at at that time, where our stops are.
Okay, and, and I wasn't fully aware that it was an evening process.
Yes.
I, I know when we were at the FSBA at Tampa, there was a presenter there from Marion County and they have something like this up there. But they, they have a facility that they run from kindergarten up. And, uh, but it's a separate facility, it's not on a campus where there's somebody already there. Uh, right now, we don't have that opportunity. Uh, but, uh, uh, this is something we're looking at trying to put also in the north end, if I'm not mistaken.
And one of the, in the proposal for the legislative, we actually were proposing an AM and a PM for that reason, because you can bring them in. But we build in portables so that we could do a school within a school for the, a lot of the implications that Ms. Llewellyn has, has mentioned. But it does make the price go up because we don't have that facility. If you, like, you can use existing facilities, but you have to do an evening, you know, a PM program because of, uh, not having access to the, those facilities during the school day.
Now, are the teachers that are, are doing this after, you know, the evening classes, are they being compensated?
Yes, they are.
But the administrators aren't?
Administrators are being compensated, everybody in the program has to be compensated.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I thought they were salary.
It's beyond, it's, it's, it's a second component to their job, it's, because we're, we're rolling, okay.
But no, I, I'm glad to hear that, but I mean, sometimes, uh, we seem to take advantage of situations.
Believe me, they're still getting their nights. I work with other two principals to make sure the night they work is still, they get the next night at the school what they're supposed to be working, so they get their duties.
All right.
I know the grandmother of a child who went through this program and I know how important this program is, so thank you.
I just, we just need your passion and implementation for your staff when we replicate the program, so, because I'm excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you hand me that clicker, please? Um, I'm gonna ask Mrs. McLeod to come up and board members, I'm gonna give you this update, um, very, very quickly just to, um, bring the new board members up to speed. Um, about two years ago, we, well, it's gone on a lot longer than that. But, uh, there's been a long, long history of discussions here, probably ten years ago, Mr. Johnson can attest to that, on, um, having this partnership with the South Lake Hospital, Lake County Schools, Lake Sumter State College, and the University of Central Florida, and now we include Montverde Academy. Um, we've had a governance, uh, group that has met on and off for the last two or three years, um, on the new. And, and originally, um, you know, ten or twelve years ago, it was about a facility and needing to build it and it was gonna be a separate school. We built Lake Manyola, so that was kind of way, 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 um, in the past. So now, this was to put together a cohort and an academy and we've designed it over the past three years. And it now is in the second year of its implementation. We had a governance meeting on January the twenty-fifth, got an update, I wanna share that update with you very briefly. Just to remind our new board members, the purpose of this was, is that all the partners came together. We wanted, um, a STEM initiative that was a cohort group that was so focused on health sciences. And the hospital, uh, really was looking to make sure that they had a spectrum of health-related, um, employees that were ready to go and trained, um, in, in the healthcare industry. We put together work groups and these were the areas that we had work groups in. Uh, we had representatives from all the stakeholders, meaning the hospital had representatives, the state college did, lakes, uh, uh, Lake County Schools did, UCF did. And we worked on all these different areas to build the program and design it. Here's basically, we, um, and last year was the first year, we had ninth graders come in and then we have tenth graders this year and they're coming in cohorts. Um, this was the curriculum for the ninth graders and then now you see the curriculum for the tenth graders. It is set to be a cohort program so that the ninth graders move up to tenth grade. We do have in our memo of understanding where juniors, um, if you've moved into the area and you wanna become part of it, there's a way to become part of it, e- even if you are coming in your tenth or eleventh grade year. Notice that executive internship one and executive internship two, that is in tandem with the, um, hospital. Um, executive internship one, this is what we did in the fall, this is what we did in the spring with our ninth graders. Um, so you can kind of see. Um, so you can kind of see the topics that are there. Uh, here is the experiential learning. These are some of the things that they're doing. There's field trips, there's career showcase, there's mentoring, job shadowing, clinical rotations. There's practicums and internships, there's a portfolio. Right now, the, um, students go over to the state college. Um, they have, um, I think there's three times a year. And then there are alternating other times when they actually go to the hospital and work the prac, with the practitioners. There was the very first fall summit we had, um, and the actual student, first inaugural group of students that we had and what we did at that summit. Then in October, they came back and they actually went to the hospital. And there are students, um, and this is what they did in the hospital. Um, the different areas that they, they had an experience with. Then they had a winter summit where they came back to the state college and they worked on those areas. And then finally, there was an April visit where they went to the hospital again and they looked at those particular areas. So that was year one. Um, then they came back and had an end-of-the-year summit. So there's actually five times the cohort comes together. And those are students from all three high schools. And you can kind of see where they ended up there. We had 136 scholar applications submitted, 130 were accepted. And actually, 123 actually started and, and came to the program. So you can see we target and we may get, we have a little bit of an attrition there before we even get out of the gate. But that's understandable, people move. Uh, there's the breakdown of the students. You can see which middle schools they came from, which high schools they were represented. And there's the 130 in breakdown in totality. Okay? Um, there's the breakdown in diversity. Um, then this year, we had 107 out of the 123 that actually came back and returned to go into the 10th grade. You can see what happened to them, two changed schools, seven withdrew, six weren't eligible based on GPA, and one was not eligible because of a discipline situation. Um, there is the curriculum as it breaks down into the internships. Um, the voluntary public service, there is a component there. And finally, the career planning, that's where we are now. We're working on the experiential learning components where you can see that. Um, here's the second cohort. So you'll see the first cohort was what I talked about with the 107 finished in the spring. Ninety-nine came back. We had 175 for the second cohort. This would be this year's ninth graders. 137 were accepted and 129 actually started. So we're trying to keep up with that. All right, moving forward, this is where we are exactly right now. Um, I did give you a copy, board members, of the previously approved memo of understanding. This was approved back in 2015. Um, we've been operating on this. The board at the time did put a line item, uh, dollar amount in to help with the seed money and the startup. I think Mr. Messiah has talked about that the other day. You can see up here the proposed funding. This year, we have the $150,000 in the budget line item. So that will be paid, um, to Lake Sumter, that was always agreed to. Um, and so now, moving forward, um, and this is what is being proposed now. So the 150 has been in the budget. That's, you know, to do all that startup and the design and the marketing and, and all those kinds of things. So moving forward, we will, next year for the 16th, or the 17, 18 budget, you will have your first group of 11th graders. And they will be full-time at Lake Sumter State student. So the question is, okay, what's the funding? And so we work through this. And based on the categoricals and everything that we look through, um, the funding does follow the student. So they will be full-time at Lake Sumter. So $5,500 will follow the student. The other dollars are because they're categoricals, meaning safe schools, um, SAI. I don't know what the other one is. Transportation, food service, those things stay with us. So we ha, we provide the transportation for them. We provide, you know, we have to make sure that food service regulations are in place. So right now, that's what's being proposed in the operational agreement moving forward. The other $35,000 is to cover our proportionate share of the expenses for our students participating in the ninth and 10th grade. Okay? So if you remember, we've had two years of ninth and 10th grade. We agreed to some startup, we agreed, and there's some, those costs, that's what the 150 did. But from this point going forward, $5,500 follows per student in the junior year and senior year when we get to that point. But a flat fee of $35,000 will be paid to cover the expenses for our ninth and 10th grade and the participation in that. Just so you remember, Lake Sumter shared some expenses here. We shared expenses here in the seed money. And the hospital put up a million dollars. Um, and that, that went in the form of the building where this will house. Uh, we do have a draft of the operational agreement. Uh, Mr. Johnson was kind enough to read, um, kind of the, the template of that and give us some guiding questions. We've worked through all of those. Um, our part is pretty much done. It's now with Montverde Academy because they need to do their part because their funding is much different since it's private. And once that piece is in there, they'll clear it with UCF. Will, Mr. Johnson will read it one more time. Um, we anticipate that agreement will come to you sometime in April. Um, the MOU is still in existence, but the operational agreement needed to be worked out in moving forward. So that will be, that's what's being proposed to be for your planning for the budget moving forward for the 17, 18 school year, um, provided you approve that operation agreement. Anything else, Mrs. McLeod, that I didn't cover? Okay, questions? Okay, great.
Nicely condensed.
How many, how many students total for the, the?
Okay, this is what we have right now. Um, we have-
Am I looking, which one, which line am I looking? The 99 plus 129?
99 plus 129 is what we have right now. Thank you very much. Uh, oh, I guess I didn't. This is what the projected enrollment is, 100 in 11th and 112th grade. Um, so we're projecting to have 111th graders next year. Sorry, I missed a line. And that's it.
Brings us to the Spring Creek Secondary attendance boundary.
It just seemed a short while ago I said, "Good morning." So good afternoon, board chair, board and superintendent. I think the item before should be pretty, pretty simple and straightforward. And, um, Mr. Johnson, feel free to jump in if I don't say something quite right. And the reason I say that, of course, is because we're gonna be talking about attendance boundaries. And of course, that is policy of the board. So as policy, that's why I need to talk with you about this. We're speaking about Spring Creek, even though I have up there K8 secondary, we're really talking about just the K5 as a secondary today. And I'll talk a little bit why the 68 is left out of this, um, for the moment. So our background is that all of our conversion charter schools have attendance zones. Of course, an exception to that would be our tech center. It is a conversion charter, but it doesn't have an attendance boundary period. So for the purposes of this discussion, we will just behave as though that doesn't matter. The Florida statute 1002.33 requires that students have an option if they don't wish to attend a conversion charter school. All conversion charter schools, but Spring Creek, and in this instance, K5, have secondary attendance zones. Spring Creek, except for Spring Creek. And part of that is just in the course of doing attendance boundaries. We haven't been up that way in a very long time. So we just never got around to setting a secondary for that particular school. Spring Creek has requested an elementary secondary boundary for clarification purposes. All the middle school students in Spring Creek Zone are assigned to Umatilla Middle School. So their middle school component is the actual school of choice. And that's how it's operated and operates fine. This would not change that at all. Our situation is that, um, a couple of years ago, and, and we've gone back and updated this, Will Davis, our GIS manager, developed a split secondary boundary map. And it's based on travel patterns. And the students in the northern part of this zone, in fact, let me just go to that so I can put the map up there and you can see it. The students in the northern part of the Spring Creek Zone would have an option of attending Umatilla Elementary. And this is only should they not wish to attend, for whatever reason, Spring Creek Charter. And of course, the students in the southern part of that, of the Spring Creek Zone would have the option of attending Seminole Springs Elementary. Previous adjustments to secondary zones for conversion charter schools had been completed without an attendance boundary committee. And part of the reason for that is because no students were impacted by that change. So they weren't necessarily vetted through the ABC process. In fact, there have been times when if we had an ABC going on at the time, we passed it by them just for them to look at as well. In this instance, right through the middle of this attendance zone, it's a swamp area. There, there are just trails, really, literally trails that go through there. There is no transportation. We've also passed this past the transportation department. They have agreed that this would make sense to them as well. And this just zooms in a little bit further on that. So if the board is okay with us not going through a ABC process, what I would ask of the board is that we could schedule a first hearing, um, for this policy and tentatively schedule it for February 13th. That we would have an official advertisement, a policy change for this attendance boundary revision in the newspaper. And the second hearing, based on that first hearing, would be March 27th, 2017. And that really concludes what I have to say.
All right, questions, comments from the board?
Um, and this, I think, can we have Mr. Locke come up?
Yes, yes, please.
I know, right? So I'm counting, I don't know, like 20 dots outside the attendance boundary. Is, Spring Creek is not, um, full, right?
No, you're not. Not full. We're not full right now. Um, we're close. Um, and that was one of the reasons I approached, uh, Mr. Fix about this. Cause at some point, I envision that I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to tell somebody, "I'm sorry, I can't take you," but I need to tell, I need to be able to tell them where to go. So, um, that's kind of why I-
We almost came close last year, right?
Very close, yeah. Um, and as, as he said, um, we can't, we can't zone our school and tell somebody they have to go there. If they don't want to go there, they don't have to go there. So we need another option for them. So, um, now hopefully, they want to come to me. I mean, that's my goal. Um, but, um, you know, you never know, so.
So will those, I don't know, with the new choice policy, okay?
Let me just point out, these dots are representative of an earlier time. And I'd have to look at the time of the map. So I wouldn't necessarily focus on those dots, those students, these dots could have changed.
Okay, well, let's pretend there are dots.
Okay.
Would they be, they used to would have been wavered in? Would they be grandfathered in in some way? Cause I know we have the new choice policy, so now I'm lost.
When the conversion, when the conversion charter schools were formed, theoretically, they didn't have to, nobody had any right to go there like it was their elementary school. If I lived next door, I couldn't have walked in and said, "I, I, I go here because this is my elementary school." They have a right to choose to go there if they want to.
But I thought that Spring Creek was a zone school for K through-
We have a zone because, quite frankly, when we started this process many years ago, the conversion charters wanted a zone. Because they wanted some guarantee that they were gonna have some kids go to the school. I've always believed that 80% or more of the parents for many years never even knew that, that they could not go to a certain conversion charter if they didn't want to and go someplace else. Because we didn't advertise that, you know, this was the arrangement. But for the other charters who got full, we saw the day coming where you were gonna have to have a zone for those, for those folks to go who, although they wanted to go to Spring Creek, Spring Creek doesn't have any room anymore. So what we did, and I think Miniola was the first one that we did it with, was we have, all right, we gave Miniola a zone and, and said, you know, "Those, we expect you to serve the students in your zone." And if you go on Miniola's website today, I think it says that. We take everybody within our zone. But then when it starts to get full and, or the parents go there, "I don't want to go to Miniola Elementary. I don't have to, it's a charter school, I want to go someplace else." We had, we didn't have for a while, another place for them to go. So what we did is we divided this secondary zone, which is, if you don't want to go to the charter school, you just don't get to go wherever. Well, you didn't until choice comes in next year.
Oh, right.
But you didn't get to go wherever you wanted. You went to one of the schools that was in now your secondary zone. So that's how we took care of the issue of having kids come in that were over capacity for, for the conversion charters. Now, yes, you're right, we have, we have choice. So that's going to affect that. But we still need to have a zone for those students to go to. We need a zone for the parents, "I live here, where, what, where do I have the right to go to school?"
Right, okay. So my under, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, for those kids in like Eustis Heights, if with, if they are out of zone, if they've been getting a zone waiver and they're going to Eustis Heights for next year, they still can go to Eustis Heights on choice?
They're grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in. Will these children who are going to Spring Creek be grandfathered in? That's what I'm asking.
If I may, Superintendent and Chair, this changes nothing in terms of the students that are currently there today. And in fact, it doesn't change, it, this doesn't change the attendance boundary. This does nothing for the present student body. All this does is allows us that if either he is full and has to turn away students or a parent calls me and says, "You know, I've been up there to Spring Creek and I just don't want to go there for X, Y, Z reasons," which never happens, but should that happen, I can say, "All right, based on your address, your opt-out school that you can choose to go to is," and depending on where they fall on that side of the line, the one, which one of those two schools?
But what if he's full and those kids have been going there for three or four years?
They would be grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in. This is for anybody new enrolling.
Right.
Okay, okay, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
And one other thing to consider is that we do our own transportation. So our buses travel to go pick up elementary school, school kids up into the Astra area, the Lake Mack area, where there aren't any Lake County school buses going for elementary school kids at the moment. So when we looked at this, that was another, that was another issue was that if, if somebody can't come to my school, if I can't take anymore, there's no buses going up there right now. So this, this allows transportation to know that if they do need to start going up there, that's the buses that they run and that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question. I'm sorry it was confusing.
So we'll send this back on February 13th?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, he's making his way on up. It seems like, um, the sad thing for you is that every time we get the report, it always finds itself towards the end of the agenda. Hopefully, board members have had a chance to look over it or ask us some questions.
Great, thank you. I don't think this will take more than five minutes anyways, at least my part. See how many questions you have. Um, this is the, basically the first inventory, excuse me, the first audit I've completed for the school year 2016, 2017. So this is the physical inventory and it's taken at the, at the end of the year slash beginning of the new year. But it's, uh, it's one of the items that, that it's, that's done at that particular point in time. Normally, what I first do is I sit down with the certified public accountants and we divvy up who's gonna go where. So, um, last year, um, it was divvied up a little bit different than this year. And we kind of switched off back and forth a little bit. So this year, I did food services and transportation. The external auditors did the main warehouse and maintenance. So my report is basically from my observations only. Um, if there's anything that the external auditors found, they would obviously report on it under their, um, management letter at their year-end information. Basically, no material issues found, uh, from either the audits that I, that I, um, visited and, and did test counts as well as test cost work. Um, and kind of go over slide and this kind of turns out a little bit dark. But for food services, uh, there's 44 schools in their inventory. Uh, and the, and those inventories range from $3,000 to $21,000. And so a total of $446,000. There's two summer feed programs, so they kind of come in right at that time. And all- There's two summer feed programs, so they kinda come in right at that time and all that food's coming in and there's, and there was $36,000 worth of food. So I had a grand total of about $482,000 worth of food to look at, um, at, for this particular period in time. One of the things I did find, and if those that were here, when I first did it, I found this same issue, and I guess it, it just comes a point of understanding this, but, um, what happens is, is we get federal subsidies for some of our food items that we get. And, um, what I found out the first time is, same thing I found out this time is, is, let's say the item costs $10, but we're getting a federal subsidy that makes it, actually we're purchasing it for a dollar. So that $10 item, they're costing it in inventory at $10 when in fact, we only paid a dollar for it. So I'm not sure why they keep getting off on that, but if we're only paying a dollar for it, it should show up as a dollar item on their inventory. So it's not a lot of money, at least at, at this particular point in time. What happens is, is during the year, that all accumulates. And when the accounting closes out the year-end, they would obviously reconcile for that and adjust, if that makes sense. So in other words, they would be lowering their inventory quicker because it only costs a dollar, yet they're costing out 10 bucks, so.
Wouldn't that mess up their profit and loss?
Uh, it gets adjusted. It would get adjusted at, at the end.
Yeah, but well, I mean, if they did it upfront, they wouldn't have to do it at the end.
Correct. That, that's, that's my point in making the recommendation that they correctly cost it in their inventory.
Okay.
So it gets costed out correctly and you don't have to do the catch-up at the end.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, and then, and then an update, you know, the, um, when I first came on board, I don't think all, well, as a matter of fact, most inventories were not on perpetual inventory system. Now we were only waiting on food services. This year, food services is implementing their perpetual inventory system. Their hopes, uh, is by the time they do inventory, that they'll put the inventory on. They had to start with the dietary piece of it and then work their way through it. And, um, by the end of June, they hope to be fully on the perpetual inventories of their inventory, of their full inventory. Um, transportation, uh, I did all the work there. They're doing an excellent job of cleaning their inventory up, um, from the sites that I visited. And I saw no issues with their test cost work, so I would say clean bill of health. Currently doing the follow-up audit at transportation, I'll have more information on that after that's completed. Any questions on?
So you're saying we, we've gained half the money?
We've done what?
We've, we've gained, I don't know how to phrase that, gained half the money? Twice as much?
On transportation?
On transportation.
There's no gain. This is their, this is their, this is their.
We spend half as much.
This is their inventory level at the year-end.
Oh, but we're only halfway through the year?
So, no, no, what, what, each year they have, uh, an amount that they count, and that was the ending amount.
Right, 239 is like half of 441.
That 239,000 was back in 2010.
Uh huh.
So this year, the purple.
Oh, I'm reading it backwards.
2016.
All right, gotcha.
Uh, they had, their inventory value was $333,000 and.
Right, okay, I was reading the chart backwards.
Yeah, so it, it's flowing across, yeah, from right to left. Questions? Anymore?
You, you said there were two others, but that will be brought to us at a later time, about the maintenance and the other issue?
Well, that would be only if the external auditors have any, uh, normally they do their presentation through the CAFER, the management letter, and they present that to the audit committee. So I don't believe the, CAFER gets sent to the Board for approval, but I don't think there's a presentation, right? I haven't seen one over my three years.
Well, my concern about the inventory, uh, as I shared with you one time before, is that we don't take stuff off the inventory that these individuals, they may not use it today or this month or three months from now. But it's an item that they don't make anymore. And so we wanna make sure that we convey that, that we don't wanna get rid of that. If it's, we have something that it will fit on, we wanna keep it just because it's not a movable item.
Yes, and I've been talking, while working at transportation, I've been trying to make myself extremely clear, when I'm talking about bringing their inventory levels down, is, first of all, is, just as an example, there's over 2,600 items at transportation. 170 of those items are moving on a regular basis. Of that, like you just said, there are items that they need. They, they have to have them because it may take two or three months to get that part if they need it, if they need it. So there are parts in there that they need to keep.
Right.
Um, I, I, you know, and, but there are a lot of parts that haven't moved and haven't moved in many, many years, and they know, and they know they've been around there and, so they're working at cleaning them up. And, um, the inventory manager has identified over, over 100,000, roughly $100,000 worth of parts in their inventory, and you can see it's 300, and so a third of that inventory items they can get rid of.
Right.
But there's $200,000 worth that, you know, there, there's, there's parts in there that they've gotta have. And, and it takes too long to get them if they would throw them out. And there's a good chance if they threw them out today, in three months, they would need it.
Smart.
That would be crazy. And as I told them, you'd be crazy if you have a bus that that part fits on, I would not get rid of it.
Well, the other issue I have is, especially in the maintenance inventory of their warehouse, is they've, they've cut out a lot of things that the guys needed that they no longer can get unless they have X amount of dollars or whatever, because you just can't go use a P card unless it's an emergency. So they, they have a lot of deficiencies there in, in materials that they need, where they used to go out and be able to fix a water leak because they would have that part, that washer on their truck. Now it's no longer there and it's not in the inventory, so therefore, they've got to go get X amount of dollars before they can ever get that washer. So we continue to have a drip. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but that, my, my understanding at maintenance is, is that part should have been on their, their truck is, I hate to use the word bench stock or truck stock.
Once you use it up though.
Yeah, because it's just a washer. It's just, it's a two-cent washer.
But once you use it up, it was hard to replace it on your truck because you just couldn't go do it. It's just like tools on the guy's truck, they're having a hard time with tools and some are having to bring tools from home.
So, you know. Tools, tools was separate from inventory.
I, I know, I understand, but tools are on your inventory.
No, they're not.
They're on the employee.
Tools are on the property inventory.
They should be property, thank you.
Not, not the parts inventory.
They're not parts.
Right. But I'm just saying, that's what I'm, I'm leaning to, is that we gotta be careful whenever we're doing this and we're creating different ways that we want things done, is that we, don't go in there and start eliminating things that guys need to do.
Right.
We have available to them.
Right. And, uh, well, yeah, it's, it's.
I mean, I know Mr. Carr is working on a lot of this, uh, because he and I have talked about it in some areas, but it, it's just things that I hear from guys all the time is, we can't get parts, we can't get this, and the warehouse doesn't carry this anymore. And transportation probably has the same issues too on some things. You know, because they want to try to make their inventory lean so they'll be accommodating. But the thing is, sometimes we cut off our nose to spite our face.
And you should never do it for penny parts.
Right.
And that's stuff you're using every day, so I, I, I don't, it's not what I'm recommending, if that makes sense, um.
In, in, in all fairness to you, that's what you told me. But the problem is, it gets conveyed by someone else a different way, and then next thing you know, they're taking a 13-cent washer off the shelf that they should have, and now it's costing us $100.
So something's getting lost in interpretation, because your recommendations, I mean, you've got, you've got some recommendations about which parts are ideally they should be scaling back on or ways to reduce the inventory, and if they're picking different ones.
Yeah. I mean, transportation is the same thing, I mean, when we're out in the warehouse, they have the stock out there, like the nuts and bolts and that, those aren't inventory, those are items that they use and need, you know, daily. And, you know, to need a bolt to, because one broke off when you were taking something off the vehicle, you know, you need, need to walk over, get a new bolt to put it back on, right? The right size bolt, obviously. So those are all pre-expensed and available to the mechanic, so, uh, it should be the same way at maintenance if those were just little bolts and nuts and parts should be available to make the proper.
Well, I, I know before I left, there were some other items that was being taken off, and not to do with you, but.
I don't think it's anything from my recommendation, yeah.
But it's been done by administration, that other items were being taken off the inventory that was no longer gonna be available for them to just go and get. And like you said, the bench stock or truck stock, as they call it, is something that they should replenish, but if there's nothing there to replenish from, they gotta wait until they build up enough to buy and purchase it.
If it's something they're using every day, it shouldn't matter to carry it in inventory. That's, that's how I view it. I mean, it should be in inventory, if they're using it almost every day, it should be there Thank you.
How do we, how do we actually get what he says into action?
That's, uh, it's really up for staff to.
I have been listening to the conversation, and I believe, and I will go back and talk with the staff about it, but I believe there is a little misunderstanding on parts like washers, those 22-cent parts and those kinds of things and the accessibility. And then the larger conversation, when Mr. Mock first came on, the conversation of the huge inventory that we had, there was a recommendation that we were carrying way too much on our inventory and we needed to thin that down. I think somewhere the message has gotten applied in, uh, uh, in not just on those, reducing the inventory here to, reducing it to those small bench or truck, uh, part, uh, things, and I think there is some clarification that needs to be made there.
And to me, that's more reducing your costs versus reducing your inventory, because they should never have been in inventory anyways, so.
Right. I think, I think there's some misunderstanding here because there, because what I remember, Mr. Campbell, was when that first came out and the, the topic of the inventory came out, is that, but we keep this part on the shelf because the equipment that it goes on, you know, is 35 years old. And if it breaks, we can't get that part, and that, that, that item is still in play. And, you know, there is, so we had to work through, that wasn't exactly what Mr. Mock was saying, but there was a conversation about reducing inventory. And I think it's just kind of working through the understandings and the interpretations.
Well, I could see reducing inventory, but maybe reduce the quantity versus the amount of what you have variety.
Sure. And one of the things that we got now that, and it's because we have perpetual inventories, we have reports. And as I, and the, the inventory manager at transportation, when I went in there, I asked him for the report, he had never even printed it yet. And they've been on, he had been on the system 15 months. So we've started printing the, I started helping him print the report, downloading it to Excel, where it gives us the opportunity to sort it and he can look at it, and he was just like elated that he had a tool that showed him his inventory, you know, what was moving, what wasn't moving, how to clean it up. So he finally has a tool to, to, to actually, a report to help him manage and, and, and work it. And I told him, I said, work this every, you know, three months, four months, some, somewhere along that line. You only have to work it a couple times a year, and eventually, it's gonna help you get to the point where you need to be in your inventory, and you should be carrying only those items that move on a regular basis, plus those items that you need. You have to have, if that makes sense. And, and then the other part is managing those lead times on that report, and they're, and they haven't even been using those yet. So now that he has that report, he can use that, and if he has three of something and he only uses maybe one or two a year, you know, he can set his lead times appropriately so he doesn't order it too soon, you know, and get it in and let it sit there for four, five, six months. So it's, to me, it's, it's kinda managing kinda the way I would in my own life. I mean, you know, why would I buy something that I don't need till next year? You know, wait until I need it, right, or close to when I need it, and then at that point get it. So it's kinda looking at things like that. So if he manages that way, you know, I think 99% of the time, he'll, he'll have what he needs and, you know, and those few times that something sneaks up on him, you know, he has to just work it from there. But he's getting sources, he's getting new sources to get products too. I mean, he's, he's a sharp guy.
Good. How do, what about the cost on, the costing on food?
They've addressed it.
They've addressed it?
Yeah, I followed back up and.
Great.
Yeah, so. I don't know how it gets off, but it's just, it's just one of them items that, you know, I don't think we deal with that often, does that make sense? And then it comes up.
Food costs?
No, the federal subsidies, getting subsidies and.
Oh, okay.
So when they come in, in some years, we get more than others, so.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Brings us to our Board member comments. Sandy, we'll start with you.
Earlier, we signed up for different committees and things. One of the ones, and I meant to have mentioned this at the time, uh, I didn't see anything on there about an insurance committee. Uh, I know Ms. Divender was on it the last time.
Mrs. Divender just attended the committee. She, there, there was, that's, um, that's a joint committee between the district staff and, and the representatives from SEIU and, and LCEA. But there is not, that is not a board-appointed committee.
Okay, all right.
But, but Mrs. Divender would attend periodically, I know.
Okay.
I mean, just by her choice, she would just come.
All right. Uh, and then we're getting ready in March on, still to do this true time? As far as that, okay. Uh, I, I would just like to mention that, and this probably may have to go back to Mr. Wheeler to put this together, but what we talked about before about the time in which it regards to Skyward, as far as their time off, that we, people that are 12-month employees that just get noted that the last day of each month, that it is noted that they get X amount of hours of their vacation time at that time versus mid-months, as it is right now. So if we could work on a program on that.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll follow up with you on that one.
You don't wanna me?
Yeah. I, I guess, I hear what you're saying, I don't know from the technological programming of that, I don't know.
We brought this up three years ago when it went on program with maintenance, and they said, well, we're working on a, a program to do this because you just can't do it. Well, it's been three years and we're still not there.
I'm sorry, I was not aware of that particular topic. But I do wanna let you know with the true time, we're actually, because there were a lot of questions came up, even when talking with Mr. Klett, on some of the questions that have come up, we're gonna do an FAQ and I'm actually addressing it at principal's meeting.
Okay. Uh, the union, I understand, will be doing their ratification this week, and, and I know we're at a retreat, but is it possible to include a?
Already done. That's been, designated now as a special meeting so we can take action on that.
Okay.
And then your retreat will follow that one item.
Okay. Uh, okay, then I took care of that. And I would like for us to look further into the athletic directors, full-time, at least one at each high school, because the, the thing about that is, uh, either we're gonna fully invest in our, our student athletes, or we're not. I mean, because we're failing them at times if we don't follow through on this. And it's something very important with everything that you've gotta do for the requirements for them. On two positive things, uh, last week, I attended the Literacy Fair at Triangle, and I got my first passport that I've ever had, uh, going through there, got little stamps and everything, so I acquired my first passport. Uh, last week, we were reading at Eustace Heights Elementary in Lost Lake and, uh, reading to second graders and thoroughly enjoyed it, and I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Um, I'll keep my, okay, anyway. We need a, to develop an opt-out document like we had about three years ago. So by that, I mean, we need, we know that we will have students that opt out of the FSA, whether or not we agree with that or not. Um, and about three years ago, we put, we, we did proactively put out an accurate document about what would happen, what were this, what were the?
It was just last year, wasn't it?
It, it's dated now, and, um, I think that we should put out another one, cause I'm hearing from schools, um, that misinformation is being put out by some people.
And the, I guess, to piggyback on that, there may even be some changes based on this legislative session, particularly if they define participation.
But it will be in testing season at that point, so.
I assume that those would probably take effect by July 1st, right? So we.
Right.
Function this testing under the current statute.
Right, right. And other than that, thank you for all, um, I know I chat plenty, so I'll just stop now.
Stephanie?
Okay, um, I also wanted to thank the schools for the Celebrate Literacy Week, we
We had a good time last week reading to students. On a more serious note, with everything that happened on Friday with our villagers charter, and then this weekend with Yumitala High School's scare on social media, the first thing I would like to do is just say thank you to the administration of that building that started working on that Saturday night, and worked all day Sunday, and was there early this morning, and they were very efficient, they were working through the issue. But I think more importantly, would be a good time for us to look at what, what procedures we have in place. I know, since I've been on the board, we haven't looked into security, and I had a couple of parents email now as a result of the incident in Yumitala High School, what, you know, what do we consider about metal detectors? And I know we've had, we've got some new legislators that have some different views on some things, and a change in administration, so it might be good to just revisit how we're preparing for those types of situations, with it having hit so close to home and so, so close together. So I just, when, when, when I learned that the student decided to warn students on social media, just the first thing I think we can do as parents, for those that are watching, is to educate our students, to let the right people know, for our teachers to report, and for administrators to report, and to reiterate how important that is, because it certainly spreads like wildfire, when it's something such a, such a potential conflict for us and for our students and their safety, so, thank you.
That would be in the form of a shade meeting, because we're talking about practices.
That'd be great. Be great.
Thank you for bringing that, that particular topic up, and it just shows you the importance of, of the old expression, "If you see something, say something." And so, so certainly, that was, that was good. I'll echo some of the sentiments I heard about literacy week, and it was a great opportunity to get out into some of the schools and to, to meet our students, and to have some, some great conversations with them, all in the context of promoting a love for reading, so certainly, I, I enjoyed that opportunity. And a true time, as well, is an item that, based on our meeting last go-round, I had heard some feedback from teachers, and I think that this FAQ will, thank you for bringing that up, as I had on my list, and I think that there is a concern out there, that, that teachers are just going to be watched, and if they clock in at 8:02, that their time is going to get deducted, and when they're saying, "But wait a second, I'm staying till 6 o'clock in the evening, does that two minutes really matter?" But, but that's, that's the feeling out there, and they're, they're not really understanding the background of the why, so why we're doing this, particularly when other districts are not. You know, I guess, I guess that's the big question to be answered there. Dr. Mock, say anything?
I don't have any other questions. The big why is, is because we have a major topic that has to be addressed, and so we'll,[1780.98]